Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November 27th Work Sessions, Charles County Board of Education. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Hello, Ms. Royster, Ms. Paul, how are you?
Good, good.
You've got some things to share with us?
Yes, we do.
Please proceed.
Go ahead, jump in. Thanks for having us again. All right, so we're going to get started. So, good afternoon Chairman Lucas and Chairperson Moore Lee, board members, Dr. Navarro, our community, and our CCPS employees. Today, we have the opportunity again to elevate the voices and perspectives of staff, students, and families here in Charles County Public Schools, who had the opportunity to participate in the Educational Equity Policy Community Surveys, Part One and Part Two. We acknowledge the value that their voice brings and that it really does matter to the work that we all do as a school community. A special thank you to the Educational Equity Focus Group members, many who are online today, watching and listening, the Office of Communications and Media Relations, and the Office of Accountability regarding this true collaboration. Ms. Paul and I will share the combined survey findings today, and we will also share recommendations to the Board and Dr. Navarro for consideration. The Board Report Agenda is as stated, it will be as follows: Agenda Overview, Community Survey Number One Revisited, Community Survey Number Two Results, Educational Equity Policy Recommendations, and Questions for our Board and Dr. Navarro. Looking at Community Survey Number One Timeline, the first community survey launched in September 20, 2023. There are a number of both internal and external communications to engage our stakeholders, and the final submission, which was reported at the December Board Meeting, closed on September 29, 2023. An outcome of the October 10 Board Meeting was a recommendation to share the educational equity policy to our community stakeholders a second time for additional feedback and opportunities for recommendations. The survey was launched on October 23, and there were multiple communication efforts to share the survey with the community, and the final survey submission date was October 31. The first question states, "What describes your primary engagement with Charles County schools?" We had a total of 152 respondents who completed the combined survey. Survey One had 120 respondents, if you remember from the October Board Meeting, and Survey Two had 32 respondents. Out of the total respondents, 61.18% were family members, 28.95% were staff members, and 9.87% were students. This question states, "Indicate your level of agreement with the identification of the underrepresented groups each underrepresented group is included currently in the educational equity policy 1820." 27.7% strongly disagree or disagree with the identification of the underrepresented groups. 73.2% strongly agree or agree with the identification of the underrepresented groups. This question states, "Which underrepresented groups is or are not included in this policy? Check all that apply." Keep in mind that within the policy, these underrepresented groups were listed: ability, ethnicity, family structure, gender identity and expression, language, national origin, nationality, race, religion, sexual orientation, and socioeconomic status. And as you can see from the information that's been provided, each group mentioned in the policy was identified as being underrepresented in the current policy, with ability groups at 14.6%, ethnic groups 12.6%, and racial groups 12.6%, stating the top three. This statement reads, "Please indicate your level of agreement with the following statements to the right regarding the glossary." There were two statements. The first statement reads, "The glossary is helpful in communication with the community." Strongly disagreeing was 14%, disagreeing was 19%, agreement 70%, and strong agreement 22%, making note that the majority of the respondents agreed it was helpful to have the glossary for the policy. Statement Two reads, "The glossary is easy to understand." Strongly disagree was 12%, disagree 18%, agree 77%, and strongly agree 18%. And again, the majority of the respondents agreed that the glossary was easy to understand as well as helpful.
All right, statement reads, "Indicate your level of agreement with the statement on the glossary definitions. The glossary is helpful in communication with the community, and the glossary is easy to understand." 73.6% strongly agree or agree with the level of statement that glossary's definition is helpful to the community, and 26.4% strongly disagree or disagree with the level of agreement that the glossary is helpful in communicating to the community. 76% strongly agree or agree with the statement, the glossary is easy to understand. 24% strongly disagree or disagree that statement is, glossary is easy to understand.
You want to go to that one?
I'm going to do that one.
There we go.
Yep.
The next question, "The following terms will be considered by the superintendent in regards to the superintendent's rule after the information is shared today with the Board and Dr. Navarro and our school community." The statement reads, "If additional glossary terms are needed, please suggest them in the space below." Survey One, these terms were presented to the Board during the October 2023 10th Board Meeting. The terms were intersectionality, neurodiversity, neuroinclusion, neuroequity, and cisgender. However, in Survey Two, the community recommended additional terms that are highlighted in yellow, pedagogy and special education.
Next question, "Do you agree or disagree with the following statements? This policy will help in addressing existing disparities in CCPS? The second statement is, this policy addresses the needs or concerns that I have for my students or as an educator in my school." 51.97% strongly agree or agree that this policy will help in addressing existing disparities, and 48.04 strongly disagree or agree that this policy will help in addressing existing disparities. 48.39 strongly agree or just, strongly agree or agree that this policy addresses needs or concerns that I have for my students and/or as an educator in my school. 51.55 strongly disagree or disagree that this policy addresses needs or concerns that I have for my students or as an educator in my school. Next question, "Is there, is there anything in this policy that is unclear to you or you need more information on? We found that the results were consistent from this timeline survey number one, and they are as follows: How was the work being done? Who was doing the work? How would the policy be measured and/or tracked? Inclusion of qualitative data to ensure that we're capturing across all areas? Accountability for all, including Board members? Supporting the implementation in terms of strategies, resources, tools, and methods?" The next question is, "Please provide suggestions for improvement," and this was also pretty consistent in terms of what does justice mean in relation to school discipline and students being held accountable for violating a school code of conduct, changing some definitions and language around professional learning, and also expanding upon what groups are actually experiencing disparities in educational outcomes and why they're experiencing those disparities. The recommendation says follows, "We ask that the Board approves of the revised Educational Equity Policy 1820 and the reference terms to be included in the operational procedures in the superintendent's rule."
Now, we'd like to open it up to our Board Members and Dr. Navarro for any questions you might have.
Frau, would it be possible to get the sort of talking points for Slides 12 and 13 in writing to the Board? I was just trying to quickly capture what was shared and make sure I didn't miss anything.
Yep.
Ms. Kramer and then Ms. Moore Lee.
Thank you both for being here again. Good to see you, as always. I just had a couple of questions. The first one being, so, this is something that drew my attention after the last presentation of the survey results regarding the groups that felt that they weren't represented. And so, I noticed that the ability group was the highest at 14.6%. So, that to me is significant, and I think it was similar last time that you did the, the survey. So, just curious to know if you had any, anyone from CAC or Dr. McKinnon or anybody in her team that was involved in drafting the equity policy? Because I feel like this group is, is screaming out to us, "Hey, we don't feel like this policy applies to us." And so, want to make sure that we're inclusive, you know, particularly, you know, if it's that pronounced in the survey results. So, just curious if anyone from our special education community was included in the drafting of the policy?
So, I'll speak to this particular revision process, and then Ms. Paul can speak to the initial development of the educational equity policy. With this particular revision, we did not engage those individual stakeholders that you're referring to. We did invite members of the Educational Equity Task Force to be a part of this policy revision process, and many, I won't say many, but significant voices at the table either have individuals that have special abilities that are in Charles County Public Schools or are advocates for that particular population. And so, their voice was elevated during these conversations. Ms. Paul, can you speak a little bit to the initial policy and who those stakeholders were?
Yes, so, from the initial policy from 2019, 2020, yes, they were at the table and they helped draft the language for the policy.
Okay, perfect, thank you. And so, that leads into my next question, which was just more broad. Are you recommending any changes to the draft policy based on the second round of survey results?
The, great question. So, the additional recommendations that were shared today are the glossary updates with the terminology that were added from Survey One and Survey Two.
Okay.
And then, I believe there were some very minor, I want to say grammatical edits that were recommended as well for this particular revision by the Chief of Schools as well. But other than those additional recommendations, it's exactly as we presented to the Board today and the community.
Okay, and the copy that we have, that's the most up-to-date.
That is the most up-to-date revised version, yes.
Great, thank you both for that, and thank you again for the work that you've done in leading this. Appreciate you both.
Questions?
To your point, Ms. Kramer, and I was trying to, to look the same thing that you were asking, there is a slight change between this and what we saw back in September. I think it is mostly grammatical, but if you want to look at the one from September, while we continue, and I mean, we're not, you know, don't have to look. We're not voting this tonight, right, Mr. Schwartz? No.
No.
Yeah.
There's one more.
Yes.
At the end, where it says, "The superintendent shall update the Board on the implementation of this policy and the work of the Educational Equity Task Force Committee." It used to say regularly, now it says annually.
Correct.
I think that was one of the changes.
Ms. Moore, Ms. Moore Lee.
Yes, thank you, ladies, and I echo the sentiments of Ms. Kramer. Very much appreciated. Ms. Kramer actually captured all of my questions except for one. Just generally and succinctly, for the benefit of the public, if I'm understanding correctly, there wasn't a significant difference between the first and second surveys, is that correct?
Correct.
In terms of the general responses that you received?
Correct.
Was, is there anything that, that stood out to you between the two? Or do you feel like, I know candidly, would have hoped for more responses. Yeah, I can understand that, but...
For me, and I'm not sure if I shared with Ms. Paul, but I, but I think we did in some just informal conversation, was the, the fact that even though the current policy had a number of underrepresented groups listed in the policy, that a significant number of community members still felt that it wasn't adequate, it wasn't enough. So, that was my aha moment, that, that piece of data that bubbled up. Yes, so I said that for me, that's one of the biggest points I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I agree. Repetitive, repetitive data points on, you know, we see ability groups identifier, but like you said, it just keeps coming up in different words. So, there is a big need, and not just that group, but in groups across identifiers, but it, it, it sounds like there's a big need, and, and, and our community is, they want it addressed now. They want accountability for it now. So, I would say the second piece is accountability across all stakeholders.
Yeah. And one more minor point is, is just the, the idea of asking for a glossary to, to have transparency and more clarity when it comes to, you know, what does this mean, breaking it down to conversation, to be able to say, "This means such and such, just to talk to a neighbor." And that was something that was expressed by our focus group members as well, which were representative of our internal stakeholders and our external stakeholders. We kept hearing that as well.
I had another question, but if I remember, I'll come back to it. But thank you, ladies.
Ms. Butler Washington.
Yes, thank you for this presentation. I just wanted to, little surprise, only 152 out of our whole community that took this survey? I, I say that to say that it seems like a lot of our parents do not take the surveys, but that does not discount, you know, what they're thinking, or, you know, work time commitments and things of that nature. So, the information was great, and I think it's, you know, it's valuable of what we're doing. I just want to, you know, just say that with the 152 that we did have, which is important, and that's why we allowed to look at the policy and make these recommendations, but it doesn't look like a lot of parents take surveys that's common. And I was trying to see if it's a different way that we can maybe survey or ask them how, what we, how would they like their information or their thoughts to be translated here to the school? Because it seems like surveys are not something that is most popular right now for us. So, just trying to look at different ways of how we can gauge those people and make sure that we, you know, hear from all parents at all times because of, you know, the number of people that actually take the surveys and stuff.
You make a valid point, because a number of our focus group members, we've had that conversation since the summer when we started bringing in individuals that want to be, wanted to be a part of this process. And we talked about the benefit of focus groups and different research methodologies that, you know, kind of bubbled up. And so, that, that has always been a consistent conversation, you know, how do we increase voice and elevate voice in our school district on top of the survey procedures? So, just know that those are conversations in, in our work that we're doing with our community. So, we continue to have those discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Thanks for the presentation. Off of Ms. Butler Washington's point, perhaps using QR codes to put these surveys in places that people are may be helpful. So, if it's at the local health department and you just have a QR code for the time it's open, they put a little thing there, somebody's walking past, does a QR code, and then maybe they can do a survey, because it's more just in time wherever you are, than, you know, relying upon people to have looked at their survey, gone into their email, and then responded or gotten an email blast. So, I do think it's a good point of just like reaching people where they are. I do have a question about the superintendent's necessary steps to implement the policy. While I think it's good, do you, have you guys envisioned any metrics that allows us to evaluate the policy? If Dr. Navarro is going to update us on an annual basis, the update on the annual basis is how the policy is doing, but are there metrics necessarily tied to some of these areas in the policy so that you truly know whether or not there's any benefits?
You want to speak to the initial?
You can start, and then...
You sure?
Yeah.
Look to Ms. Paul, she's a historian with the original policy, and I came on for this, this revision. I'm trying to think, to make sure my response is, is accurate. When you say metrics, you want qualitative and quantitative or any at all if we have them as a school district?
Well, I think there'll have to be a mixture of qualitative and quantitative analysis, because some of it will be, you know, anecdotal at best. Do you feel students, you know, or is it showing up in how it's being executed within the classroom or within policy, or, you know, in sports, or, you know, in activities? So, part of that, but also, you know, for example, there's one here that says, "Provide access and opportunity for students to read on grade level by third grade." That's one grade, one point in time, but where does it go up and down the scale from then? Like, is it continuously evaluated throughout? And then, how is it tied back? I mean, I just think, great policy where we talk about making sure that people feel that there's some equitability and inclusion and those kind of things, but how do we know it's working with such a small survey population? Are we, are we, are we moving the needle at all by putting this policy in place?
Thanks for the clarity. So, I made to defer to Dr. Navarro in case I missed something, but the answer is yes, the answer is yes. Any of the departments here in Charles County Public Schools that receive any state or federal funding have to be aligned with either the federal regulations around educational equity or the state. You know this already. So, from that, each of the departments, and we've had the opportunity since our department opened last year, to have these conversations around assessment components, you know? How do we know that, you know, COMAR is being addressed? That the regulate, the regs are being addressed? And so, we have been in those conversations since last year, since our department opened. Prior to that, I could not speak to it intelligently other than at the school level, but at the district level, we have been, because it's been an expectation. And then, most recently, with the ESA Consolidated Plan, we had to provide documentation for systemic or system-wide strategic planning with the educational equity policy and where it showed up qualitatively and quantitatively both. So, we had to provide that to the state for a review. So, there are, there are methods in place and have been since our department opened, but anything additional that I may be missing, Dr. Navarro, please let, let me know. Ms. Paul, is there anything you want to add?
Yeah, so I think one of the ongoing conversations we've had with our focus group for the policy is how we're being accountable. That's come up one time and time again. And one of the projects we would probably like to start sooner than later is to operationalize this policy, which means to go through the COMAR and figure out how to put in those accountability measures, qualitative and quantitative. Now, we don't know what that looks like as of this moment, but of course, with the direction of Dr. Navarro, we're hoping to, to, to materialize it and put it in front of procedures.
I think that, that would be great. I mean, we look at it from two perspectives. I'm also looking at it from, you know, the professional staff as well, because this policy includes not just students, but it also includes teachers. And there are some protected groups, if I could use that term, that we necessarily don't always evaluate. So, if it's gender differences, that's, that's not something that comes up normally. You have, you know, you have race, or you have, you know, gender, but if there's someone in some of those other groups, we don't always pull together, how, how do they feel? So, because we're looking at abilities and other, you know, populations, I think trying to pull those together to do a litmus test, if you will, about how the policies have infected them, I think would be good.
So, you know, I, this is an interesting policy, and I will say, the strength of this policy is the ability of everybody to hold itself accountable for the work that they're doing, to figure out exactly what it means for them. So, I'll give you a great example. The conversation we're going to start today on eligibility is an equity policy conversation. When I approached this previously with the previous Board, and again, tonight, as you guys may have seen in the PowerPoint, we highlighted different subset of students, students with disabilities, for example. And so, part of the work is, and I think the strength in this policy is that every body of work in the school system needs to be looked at with an equity lens. We had a presentation about, from human resources, and the question is, representation. And I think part of the reason why there was initial call-out about identifying subgroups and showing the data in subgroups was because we struggle getting Asian and Hispanic staff members to be part of our staff team. We've made some strides when we see representation of African-American administrators, but in, in our new teacher pools, we see a lot more African-American representation, a little bit of Asian, a little bit of Hispanic, and we are also seeing representation from a whole bunch of different places in the country. So, the, I think the purpose is also how this Board and how staff produces reports on any topic in the school system with an equity lens about which groups are traditionally underrepresented, underserved, and how do we find out about them? Some of them are trickier than others, too. I think the conversation needs to happen about how are we doing with our student outcomes, our staff retention? We are going to get data on staff retention probably in like two months or so from the state. When we come back to you and present that to you, who are we retaining? Who are we losing? Why are we losing them? And so, I think the, the question here is, the, the comfort level of this Board saying, do we have a policy with the right language that gives the message to the entire system that the body of work that we should be doing in any body of work, where, how we grow, how do we build facilities, renovate facilities, should be looked at with an equity lens? And I think that's, that's the, the question on the policies, because then the Board can say, and as they sort of monitor themselves on the effectiveness of, of, of their policies, can also say, "Well, the information that we're not, that we're getting doesn't have an equity lens in this way or that way." When staff come and report on it, or the way we report certain things. And, and this is work that we all need to do. We're not perfect at this, but I think that's the, that's the, the view that we should need to strive for on all aspects. You're about to get a presentation on the budget, and in a, in a couple of months. And then, my question is going to be, I'm looking at it with, what's the equity lens there for resources, for students? What does that look like? So, hopefully, it's difficult, because it can be a very long policy, it can be a very short policy. The question is, is the Board, how does the Board feel about sending a message to the community that it is in its expectations to see a policy lens in every aspect of the work that we do? And, you know, you'll always hear from me, "How do we know it's happening? We somehow codify it through some data lens," as you mentioned, Ms. Thomas.
Anyone else?
Dr. Navarro made me think about something, and then it made me think, thought about the, when you have the third grader now. It was a documentary I looked at, where it says that the school to prison pipeline, this is a great policy for that. That doesn't have a race on it. It says if students who have not, is not on grade level at third grade, that's when the state start building prisons. So, this policy alone will help us identify those students and bring them up so we can change the directory of what is happening in today's world. So, as I look at this policy, I look at it as we're going to give more emphasis on third graders, identify them early when they are not on task, from kindergarten, first, to second, third. And just like Board Member Thomas said, that we can also, you know, look at them when they get to sixth grade, or maybe, you know, make, expand the policy out. But this is a great policy, because you're jumping right on to what it already said it was going to be. So, we are attacking it early, and we're doing it face on. So, I do love this policy, simply because of that, because you identified. We talk about it, we see all these studies on these things, but we're doing something about it, we're actionable. We're actually putting something in place, so we in Charles County can prevent some of those trials that come down for a lot of people in the world, and Charles County is included into that, but we are, you know, going forth with it. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Ms. Moore Lee.
Yes, ladies, one quick thought. I know that there are several populations that, you know, candidly, even in light of the sadly low responses, still glaringly don't feel seen in this. Just a suggestion to figure out how we may be able to incorporate them going forward, maybe in the annual updates, and this may be more of a suggestion for Dr. Navarro. To Ms. Kramer's point, using CAC maybe as one example. If they either are helping to collect data, because I know oftentimes that, that is where parents go, when they don't feel seen for whatever reason. So, just fleshing it out as, as, as we speak, but just a thought, maybe some of those groups, and to your point, Dr. Navarro, where we, we have the obvious gaps, I don't know what that might look like in terms of maybe having like a base such as it were, or a starting point, some, some kind of central point of contact for the areas where people are consistently telling us, "I don't feel seen, I don't feel heard." In particular, it, it concerns me about the, the people that are differently abled. That, that's really, really troubling. So, happy to discuss offline, as, you know, still fleshing it out, but just, just a thought about how we can make sure that if, if we're either going to do this fully or not at all. And clearly, we're committing to doing this fully. So, I'd like to see everyone, I'd like to see those numbers decrease, and everyone at least, even if it's not ideal or perfect, but they understand that they're, they're significant as part of our population, that their voices matter, that, you know what I mean? Like, I really want them to understand... Like, I really want them to understand that. It's not something that we just say, okay, well, only five or 10% of the population feels that way. To me, that still warrants some kind of, you know, response, exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again for the presentation. I was, you know, on slide 11, I know you talked about this a little bit, but, you know, pretty much split in half about people agreeing whether the policy would address their concerns, and certainly like to see that higher, but I think really, that's just the artifact of the fact that there's, you know, 10 or 11 areas where people were feeling that, going back to slide seven, you know, what underrepresented group isn't included in that policy. It just spreads so thin, and for most people, right, it's one or two areas that they're focused on. And so you're, you're just not going to get, you know, that level of satisfaction overall, because everybody has that one thing, that litmus test for them, that no matter if it's 90% good, that 10% is all they care about. So I think that, you know, I'm saying all that to say, don't, don't, don't be that discouraged that it's only 52% and 45%, because again, I think that's everyone with their little niche. And to Ms. Morley's point, it's not that we're going to ignore it, we just have to drill down further and see how we can get, you know, more respondents and more groups to weigh in on what can be done. So, thank you again. My stuff is always, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Jones? Mr. Paoli?
All right, and good afternoon, Board Chair Lucas, Board Vice Chair Morley, Board members, Dr. Navarro's staff. All right, so I have with me this afternoon, Mr. Richard Pauley. He is the Director for Activity, Student Activities, Athletics, and Aquatics. And I'm Marvin Jones, of course, I'm Chief of Schools, and so we are going to share an information item with you tonight regarding our extracurricular and eligibility requirements. So I'll let you go ahead and click there, Ms. Paul. Actually, you can go ahead and start.
Yep. All right, so we'll fill you in on the current policy as it's written. Students are promoted from eighth to ninth grade, or students when they're promoted from eighth to ninth grade automatically meet the eligibility requirements for the first semester of high school. Beginning in the second semester, which is after quarter two, students must have earned 2.0 grade point average from the second quarter with no failing grades, and may not have more than four and a half unexcused absences. Eligibility for each quarter thereafter is determined is based on the GPA, the report card grades, and attendance standing of the previous quarter. So for the spring sports, just to give you an example, it's going to be from quarter two, and into quarter three as well. Beginning in the third quarter, students may be eligible with no more than, excuse me, recommended changes, I'm sorry. Beginning in the third quarter, students may be eligible with no more than one failing grade, if GPA requirements are met, and again, those are a 2.0. Beginning in the third quarter, attendance limitations or requirements will be eliminated. Some notable facts here that I pulled from the 24 local education systems. Eighteen systems in Maryland have a 2.0 GPA requirement, which is where we are at right now. That is 18 out of 24, that's roughly 75%. There are four systems in Maryland that have no GPA requirement. There are 13 systems in Maryland allowing one failing grade, which is 54%. And there are two systems in Maryland that allow two failing grades, and there is one system that has an attendance component as a part of the eligibility for extracurricular activities, and that is Charles County.
All right, so talking about changes, really, is what we are here to talk about, right? Proposed changes or to make recommended changes. And so you heard the two items that Mr. Pauley, sorry to get your name right, so, you heard what he talked about as far as what we'd like to see changed, and so what we wanted to do was to share just a little bit of data that we think would be important for you to know about. And so if we can just go through this, and I'll try to, I guess, bring some clarity to these numbers here. So the light blue row across is for last, last year, obviously, and then the orange one, or whatever color that is, is for this year. And so all for the first quarter, so we're just talking about the first quarter. So to explain what we have, if you're looking at under where it says quarter one eligibility status based on current policy, that's the left column you see, and there's an ineligible column and the eligible column. So last year, first quarter, we had 69.8% of our students who were eligible, and that is based on the current policy that we have in place, right? And so this year, first quarter, based on the current policy, we have 69, first quarter, 69% of our students who were eligible. So that's current. So as we look at what we are proposing, the changes that we are proposing going across now, so we have asked for the attendance requirement to be eliminated. So for example, if there were no attendance requirement last year, for first quarter, instead of having 69.8% of our students eligible, we would have had 74% of our students eligible, if there were no attendance requirement. If there were, if we did allow one failing grade last year, instead of 69.8% eligible, we would have had 75.6 of our students who would have been eligible first quarter. And then to combine them all, we would have gained, last year, first quarter, would have gained about 1,122 more students. And so from 69.8% of our students being eligible first quarter last year, if we were, if we had our changes in place, we would have had 81.8% of our students eligible first quarter last year. And so this year, first quarter, similar numbers, again, 69%, 69% of our students were eligible first quarter. If we did not have the attendance, attendance requirement there, we would have added 452 more students, which would have been almost 74% of our students, again, eligible with the attendance. Same, another 533 students if we allowed one failing grade. And again, about 1,100 students we would have added if the changes we're proposing were in place for this quarter, we would have had, instead of 69%, we would have had 80.7%. That's all students. But we did take a look at this, and you heard Dr. Navarro mention a little bit about equity and access to opportunities. We looked at it for a couple of our major subgroups, special education being a pretty important one. Again, the light blue row across is the same last year, just as the last chart. The other one is from this year for first quarter. Last year, we had 54.3 students eligible, and then going all the way across, if we were, if what we're proposing was in place last year, we would have had, instead of 54% of our students, would have had 71.2%. And this year, similarly, we started, well, this quarter, first quarter, we had 51.7 of our special education students eligible, and going all the way across, we would have added another 117 students. So 63.9% of our special education students would have been eligible with the proposed changes for this year. And the same with our students who are on free reduced meals, again, eligible last year, 57.5, going all the way across, we would have had 73. This year, 57% of our farm students were eligible first quarter, going all the way across, with the proposed changes in place, we would have had 71.1% of our students who would have been eligible for this quarter.
What you see up here is the Maryland High School eligibility of all 24 school districts and their policies. You can see at the top that Charles County is the highest with the 2.0 GPA, no failing grades, and an additional attendance requirement that goes along with it. You can kind of see everything in the green and the blue there that has, we're sitting right around that 2.0. The green is no more than one failing grade, and the blue below it is just a 2.0 GPA. The next slide is the eligibility requirements that not only are met for athletics, but they have to be met for students who participate in competitions that are non-curricular performances, and in activities which represent a CCPS school or district. Activities include but are not limited to, I don't want to read all of them to you, those are in our athletic handbooks as well. I'm sure you can all read those. And not just sports, just something that's worth mentioning, CCPS eligibility policy does not only affect athletics, you just saw that from the last slide. There are multiple, two things on there, like step team, POMs, model UN, mock trial, it's academic, things like that. Any and all extracurricular opportunities whereby high school students officially compete, perform, and/or represent Charles County. Public schools, they require strict compliance with the eligibility policy unless participation is required via instructional class enrollment, if you need an example, that's something like a band or chorus concert, and/or syllabus expectation from their class.
And so to wrap this up, we thought we'd offer just a little bit of commentary here that's food for thought, if you will. Our goal is to provide more accessible opportunities for our students to be eligible to participate in sports or extracurricular activities, regardless of who they are and what group they belong to. And certainly, while the consistency statement of holding high standards for participants of extracurricular activities of the years is acknowledged as having the very best of intentions, we certainly respect how our board got us to this point. We respect it and honor it and appreciate it. But as we look at some of the numbers, and we think about some of the opportunities that may be missed, it is something that we do think is important for us to really think about, talk about, consider, and maybe even offer some revisions. Additionally, not only are we the most stringent district in the state of Maryland as far as K-12, but we are stricter than many of the NCAA Division One schools, colleges. So maintaining high standards is unquestionably important and absolutely necessary, we all believe in that. But when you look a little deeper, we do ask ourselves at what opportunity costs and who might we be missing? And so our thought is that it's time to broaden our perspective just a little bit. We are prepared to open it up for questions, but I will offer, just before we do that, just a couple of examples, if you will, that we're not, we didn't pull this in time for it to be a part of what you have before you, but for this quarter, if it's of interest to you, we had 44 students who had a 4.0 with no failing grades, but they had more than five absences and were ineligible. There's several that I have here, but just a couple to note. We had 120 students who had a 2.75 GPA with no attendance concerns and one failing grade, not eligible for this year. 59 of our students had a 3.0, no attendance, one failing grade, not eligible. 20 students with 3.25 or higher, no attendance, one failing grade. So we have a few examples of students who, you know, missed that opportunity, they, and so we don't know whether or not they would have wanted to participate. We did track down exactly who they are and talk to them, but the numbers are certainly compelling to some degree, and so we thought that it is time to have that discussion again. So we are prepared for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. I just want to make sure I understand this, because when I first read it, I said, well, that sounds kind of odd. When you say from third quarter onward, that's onward forever, not just the third quarter of every year?
That's for the incoming freshmen, because they are eligible for the first two quarters.
So, so slide three. No, actually, for both of them. So both of them start off by saying, beginning third quarter.
Yes.
So I think, I think the inference there is beginning third quarter of this year.
That's everybody, but it's because of the eighth graders that have been promoted to ninth grade, they have, they're eligible for the first semester.
Understand.
The first semester, yes, ma'am.
Understand. But that first bullet, if the board were to accept the change, it would be, it would be no failing grade from the third quarter of this year onward.
So, no, so, so the changes that we are recommending are for next school year, so starting school year 23, 24, 25. So it's not for this, the rest of this school year? That's what you're asking?
No.
No, okay.
So, so the way, the way this says, it says, beginning third quarter, students may be eligible with no more than one failing grade. So let's suppose we took, we, let's support the, let's suppose the board adopted this.
Okay.
Okay. So for the next school year, they could have a failing grade any time of the year, correct? Not, not just starting the third quarter?
That is correct.
Thank you. That's, that's, after I read, that's what I thought you meant, it's just that it was a little confusing the way.
So when it's time, we'll be sure to clear that up.
Okay.
Because I can see now where that question came from.
All right, perfect. All right, so we're going to start with Ms. Warren.
Could you repeat what you just asked again, so I can hear that again?
Sorry, I'm sorry. So when I, when I first read that, I, I took it as, every school year, starting in the third quarter, students would be eligible if they had a failing grade. But that's not what it's saying. What it's saying is, if the board were to adopt the recommendations, then starting the third quarter, anytime, anytime during the school year, not just starting the third quarter, that a student could have a failing grade and still be eligible.
But just for ninth graders, correct? Yes, the third quarter is because of the ninth grade policy with the first semester being eligible.
Ninth grade comes in eligible up through the end of second quarter.
Well, no, I think, I think this is for any grade level.
And it will be when the change is put in place, yeah.
Yeah. So if I, so maybe I can offer a recommendation. So I think you could read slide three saying, recommended changes for ninth graders.
Yep.
Because the ninth graders, their first semester is, you're eligible. So beginning third quarter, you know, that would be our recommendation. And imagine a duplicate slide, but take out the word beginning third quarter for both of those bullets, and that is also our recommend, our recommended change to you, saying, any student, 10th, 11th, or 12th graders would be eligible with no more than one failing grade, and their GP, and meeting their GPA requirement of 3.0.
2.0.
2.0, excuse me. And, and then that the attendance limitations or the attendance requirement would be eliminated. So that would be for all students. It's just that this one specifically talks about beginning third quarter, because it really should, should say recommended changes for ninth graders, and then another one would just say for everybody else.
Okay. So my, thank you for that clarification, I think, no. But my, so the teacher and me are screaming like, I know. So you kind of answered my question when you said something about, when you read those examples at the end?
Yes.
That some of those students who have 4.0s, but missed five days or more of school, they were not eligible. But you did, you said that you weren't sure if those kids actually wanted to participate in extracurricular activities?
So, so we haven't asked these students, you know, whether or not they would have participated in something or not. What we know is who would be able to if they wanted to.
Right.
So, so, you know, could we speculate? Perhaps, but we really don't want to do that. But just to give the numbers of who would have been eligible or was not eligible this past.
Yeah, because my question was, was there any connection between the lack of attendance and that failing grade? You know, our kids miss school, they miss an assignment, they fail, in some cases, some instances. Was there any relation to that, between attendance and a failing grade and/or GPA?
Well, that's, that's hard to say. I suspect that with many of these, it's simply a class that some of the ones just, just struggled, just, you know, we know there are some that have struggled in an AP class, all the other classes that they've done really well. But that particular one is one that they... But that particular one is one that they just are having a hard time. And so, but we haven't done enough research to correlate whether or not the ones that do have the attendance concerns, and the attendance concerns were not super high. The ones that I, I mentioned, the forty-four students with a 4.0, no failing grades, their attendance was between five and seven point five. So you can't have more than four point five. So they had somewhere between five and seven point five days they were out that quarter, that was an excuse. And so, and for, for a couple of these. And so, so we don't, we didn't really do the correlation on it, again, I didn't even have this ready for Board docs. And I can share it with you afterwards, but, but we just pulled out some examples because we wanted to get an idea, how many students are we talking about? That, where attendance may have held them back from being eligible, or, or students who, you know, didn't or had one F. And so, so several more of those that I didn't even mention that were in that boat. Twenty students with 3.25, no attendance, seven students with 3.5 or higher, no attendance issues, one F on our report card. So, so there are a number, one hundred and fourteen students had five unlawful absences, only five.
Yeah, I was going to ask that, that was my next question, are these excused absences, how does that play in the factor of, you know, attendance and all that?
They're listed as unlawful absences in the data.
So if they're unlawful, then that's when that
Yes.
Policy issue comes in. I didn't know, think, times have changed, because I didn't know you could get, still get a three point anything and have an F. So that's, that, that made you, I'd be interested to see.
Classes are weighted heavier than others.
Okay, but the weight.
Right, right, it's not uncommon.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
I'm glad to see that you guys did a lot of innovative work on trying to come up with policy and comparison. I was happy to see that you talked about the NCAA requirements. As a former NCAA Division One athlete, I definitely understand what those requirements are, what it takes for kids to get through the clearinghouse in order to be eligible. Some of the classes that they are being scrutinized for or failing are not even classes that count towards their ability to even get an NCAA scholarship. So I think those are critical things. We have some students that, I, I don't know, I had a kid who failed television and film, right? But it made him ineligible to play. He was just taking a class, and he was like, oh, it's movies, I'm gonna just write papers. It ended up being different, right, and it made him ineligible. So I think, I have a lot of questions about data, because data tells me a lot. The FARM's data is very telling. Because when we talk about this policy and what it's doing, we talk about numbers and overall students, but I would like to dig into the data to see what groups are impacted. I would like to know what's happening from a gender perspective. I'd like to see that you have the, the special education students. As we know, they are heavily impacted at times with the inability to participate because they struggle a little bit more in school. So if we could dig into that data more, I think that would be really helpful. And one of the things that I would like to know is that, have we considered having a committee? The same as we have for like naming a school or other things? Because I'd like to know what students think. We are adults sitting in a room, talking about things that impact students' futures, they're the athletes, they're the, the players, they are the thespians, they're the, and I, I think asking the students, I don't know, I think we should include them, right? Because there's lots of people who say, well, school should be important, and it is important, but if you take yourself back to fifteen and fourteen, or whatever your age was, was your sport more important? I think that would help us determine what motivates them to participate. Sometimes a sport or the band or whatever is motivating for those students. So I would like to see us ask parents or coaches, we have some, you know, coaches or, or local people in the area. So if we could find a way to include students, I would love to have the students' voice in this. I think it's important, and I think it would be valuable. The other thing that I, I wanted to note here is, how is this monitored? Because I am certain that the monitoring matters. Because if it's football, or basketball, or a sport, I'm certain someone is like, coach, your kid is failing. But I don't know if somebody's going to the cheerleading coach in the debate team and saying, you gotta fail a kid too. So I would really like to see us have something in the policy about some monitorization of this, or making sure that it's monitored, if there isn't something like, is there something people are putting in? Or is it just, you take a little sheet and you take it to your, you know, your coach, and then you take it to your, because who knows if that's really happening, which means, again, we have some impacted groups of students.
Ms. Thomas, can I just pause you there? Because I, I would like my staff to be able to respond to that. Actually, Mr. Peoli's job, before he got this fancy gig, was to make sure that, that the eligibility was run. We have a report and we have a process, I just want him to give you the opportunity to discuss how we do that at every school.
Yeah, so there, there's several coaches, if you, if you go back a couple of years ago, before we had the new student information system, which is Synergy, you know, a lot of those coaches, there would be that sheet where you had to go around, and sometimes you couldn't practice, or you couldn't play the next game unless you had all of those grades in. With the student information system, as well, you know, they can, they can check those grades. I know for a fact that I would put my coach listed under there, under Synergy. They got to see every single person that was on their team and their grades, and they were all as live as can be. So if a teacher had updated that morning, they could see that grade right away.
And it's for every, because we have, we have a lot of activities listed here. Like is the key club, is somebody monitoring the key club the same way they monitor the football team?
Everything that involves eligibility goes into the student information system.
And so there's a difference between eligibility to play and those, I guess, grades at interim, you know, sometimes it's like your interim grade, or, like how are interim grades played into this factor, right? Because what, the old policy, I think, like, let's say you got a failing grade in the last quarter, then you're not eligible the next fall, right? Right? Right, so the interim grades as well as summer school, right? How do we, because I feel like there needs to be some redemption for kids. And I don't, in the, the current policy, there is no redemption, right? You're kind of stuck, if you play football and you fail, football only comes around once a year, you're stuck, right? And so I would just like to, to like see how we can interweave redemption qualities from summer school or some other things in the policy as well.
If I can answer that for you, in the athletic handbook right now, we passed it a few years ago, where students that aren't eligible can still participate in off-season activities. And that was one of the biggest, the exact reason why you asked that question, is the reason why we put it in, is so that we can capture those kids who aren't doing so well. They can be in the weight room, they can participate in off-season conditioning, and at the same time, they can monitor them, not during the actual fall season or whatever season it is that they're playing.
But they still miss their opportunity to play sports, which in high school is huge, right? You miss a ye, you miss a year of your sport, that impacts your ability to be in your class and get recruited, like. So I just really would like us to be uber thoughtful about including the students' voice and making sure that we allow students to redeem themselves. And a whole quarter or a whole semester is a long time, and I would like to see us incorporate those things.
So, so I guess I have a question at this point. Are you suggesting that these are some changes that we go back and put into the, the next time we present? Because I hear what you're saying, that, you know, as it stands right now, students who go to summer school, they, they can't, can't earn eligibility back if they had failed.
Right.
Even if they, they pass the class, that's just not what we have in place right now. But is the suggestion
Absolutely.
That something like that is incorporated into, and I guess that is, if that's the will of the board, then we certainly, that's how this works. We certainly can incorporate that into the adjusted revision that we bring back for next month, so.
Sure, I think, you know, we'll capture all these, I'm sure there'll be other comments from board members. But that's a very good point, and particularly now since we've, we've really opened up the aperture on what we offer in summer school, and we've seen the response to that, you know, there ought to be some opportunity. And there's greater opportunity for kids to, to make up for stuff, so Ms. Thomas's points, well taken.
Yeah, like a probationary period, like something that allow, like, I just think kids need to have redemption, right? We, we hold our, our kids to a very high standard, and I would just venture to say, none of us in the room are perfect, and neither are students. So we need to give them the opportunity, you know, like you said, they can go in the weight room, but maybe you can't go to games until you, you know, there's some other things that I think could be involved in the way we look at the policy.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas in the purple jacket. Anything? You're good? Okay, Ms. Smith?
So one, definitely appreciate the sentiments of my colleague, Ms. Thomas, as I believe probably the only D1 athlete on this board. And also someone who had a child who was an athlete, who was impacted by this policy, so definitely appreciate your comment, so thank you for sharing. Definitely thank you to Dr. Jones and Mr. Peoli.
Pauley.
Pauley, okay, Pauley, apologies, sir, Mr. Pauley. This presentation was very well done. Definitely appreciate the notable facts and looking at some of our sister counties, because that's definitely one of the questions that I was going to inquire in terms of how do we stand in comparison to our sister county, so thank you for bringing forth that data. I also appreciate the equitable look in thinking about our students with disabilities, as well as our free and reduced meal students. Definitely shows that you know your board and the questions that we would have raised, so appreciate you anticipating that. I only have one question, which really speaks to, is there a way? So I, I've heard the superintendent talk much about productive struggle, and I love that term, I love that phrase. I love what we're trying to do in the county in terms of elevating and raising the bar for what the opportunities that our students have academically, and never wanting to sort of shy away from that, but also recognizing the role that sports and sort of extracurricular activities plays in our students' lives. So I, I understand that balance. I'm curious about, has there been any thought around requiring tutoring? Right now, it's an option. You know, we have the, the contract with FEVS tutoring firm, I think that's the acronym, FEV? FEVS is something totally different, different job. Wrong job. You got me? Okay, but we, we have the contract with the tutoring firm, and right now it's optional for students to opt in should they feel they need some additional support. But for our, our students who are kind of participating in these extracurricular activities, if they are slipping behind, is this something that we can require them to participate in? In addition to kind of trying to keep them on track with their sport or after-school, before-school activity of their choice? Just curious if any thought was given to that of, or what wrinkles that might.
So it's, so it's not something that, that I'm aware has come up as far as a required kind of thing? Certainly tutoring is always encouraged when, you know, there, there's, there's recognition that some students need that extra support. And then obviously, you know, bringing students in and coaching them themselves, and mentoring, and coaches will do that, teachers will do that. But requiring it, I don't think that's something that we've talked about before. So certainly that's, that's something that I think we can, we can talk about.
If that was a stipulation, would there be any concerns or pushback from like parents or students? To remain, you've dipped below your failing classes, your grade point average is beginning to slip. We recognize the importance that this sport plays in your life. You're now required to go to tutoring if you'd like to remain on the team. Like, would there be any concerns in kind of requiring that level of engagement?
So with, I mean, it's, it's free, so I, I don't, I mean, I think that, that could be a barrier i- if it were, sure, yeah. But, but FEV, we're, we're paying for it.
I think, yeah, I, I think, appreciate the point, I think the term requiring might, might get a little touchy, because you could have another student that wasn't playing a sport, and you're not going to tell them, hey, you're required to go to a tutor, we're only going to focus on, on kids that are. No, but what I'm saying, but my point is, my, my point is, you have students that are failing, and you're not going to require them to have tutoring simply because they're not in an extracurricular activity. That doesn't seem to be right either. So I'm not disagreeing with you, but just say, hey, this is, this is here for you. You know, we're not saying you gotta do it, but belly up, it's there for free, yeah.
No, I, I hear you, I mean, I would like to see if it's possible for us to require it. Definitely hear where there might be some pushbacks since we're students who aren't seeking those extracurricular activities. I cannot say that word tonight, I don't know why.
Conditional.
Exactly.
Conditional, I like it.
So just curious, that was my only question, thank you.
Do you have a comment on that, or we're just, I'm just gonna work, we're just gonna work our way around unless you had a comment for that?
Yes, thank you both for being here, I really appreciate this. I was like Ms. Thomas over here, the, the, the other Ms. Thomas, Ms. S. Thomas, I don't know. We're gonna get this figured out, we're gonna get this figured out. That, I was so excited because team sports are huge. I'm a huge proponent of team sports, I'm a huge supporter of team sports, and I know the impact that it has on kids. And I participated in team sports all through my youth and in high school, and so did my older kids. And, you know, have one who did athletics and one who was like key club, SGA, all that, but same eligibility policy applied to both of them. And just know the impact that it makes in, in so many things, right? In terms of creating a package if they want to go on to college, you know, showing that they're, you know, versatile, well-rounded, that they can participate in sports and participate in clubs, and still, you know, do fairly well in academics. So just a couple of things that I noted. One, for the benefit of the public, just to understand that, again, this is not just athletics, right? So, you know, when people hear this, they think, oh, well, no, you can't play football or basketball if, you know, you don't get a certain, you know, GPA, or if you get a failing grade. But this means clubs, organizations, you know, so many more things than just traditional athletics that most of the time when people hear eligibility policy, that's what they think about. Just want to make sure that that's clear, you know, to the public about that, and, or who's impacted, and how many clubs and organizations that this impacts.
Put some of them back up in case the public's viewing.
Yes, absolutely, for all of our millions of viewers, like Dr. Navarro always says. Yeah, absolutely. The second point that I want to make, and Ms. Thomas did point this out as well, is that, you know, the FARM's data had the most significant impact, and that says a lot to me, and I think to a lot of us, you know, that those students who qualify for free and reduced meals are, would be the most impacted. And, you know, the, the eligibility would increase the most to capture more of those students should they wish to participate. And that was really telling for me. In addition to that, in most categories that you presented, which, again, to Ms. Smith's point, this was so well done, because you really did anticipate, because the first thing I thought about when I saw it on the agenda, I said, how many students will be impacted if we change the rules, and then there you have it, it's in there. And I noticed that over ten percent or more in every category, and that's huge, that's significant to me. So I think, just some things to consider is that, I think in the past, and traditionally, we look at eligibility policies like, you do well in academics, and then you get to participate in sports or extracurriculars. But for some students, doing well and, or participating in extracurriculars motivates them or makes them want to do well in school, or it improves their, their morale, or improves their attitude towards school or the school community in general. And I know, you know, Mr. Pauley, you know, we're familiar with each other, and you know that I have a lot of friends who are coaches, and I know that the last time this came up, you know, they were in support of, of, you know, sort of relaxing the policy a bit, because they know the students that would be impacted. And some, for some kids, you know, the relationships they build with their teammates, and the relationships they build with their coaches, make a huge impact in their life, and they wouldn't have those relationships outside of sports. And so if we can capture more kids who this would make a huge impact in their lives overall, it's more than just playing sports or participating in a club. You know, I think, you know, this is something that I would have to be in support of, for sure, so thank you again for this.
Mr. Hancock?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you both for the presentation, I do have a few questions. So I was a part of the last board that lowered the GPA requirement, and I reluctantly agreed to that, to lower the GPA requirement from a 2.5 to a 2.0. And during that time, I remember very vividly that we were told that if we lowered these standards, that we would see increases in, in grades and increases in attendance and behaviors would improve. So I'm, my question is, do we have any data to see if making that change in GPA from a 2.5 to a 2.0, is there any data that shows that grades, attendance, and behaviors have improved for those students that were previously ineligible and became eligible?
So I'll, I'll say that I believe we could pull that data. First, we did go from the 2.25 to the 2.0, I think you mentioned 2.5, so I'd be sure. No worries. But, but we didn't, we didn't bring that data or put it in this presentation. I think we could, we could do some research there and, and see. I didn't necessarily remember that, that particular statement, but certainly something we can take a look into.
Sure, well, thank you. And have we also, so I have a couple of questions here. Have we considered the possible unintended consequences? Have we considered the possible unintended consequences such as, right now we have students who currently struggle but put in the extra work to meet the requirements to be eligible. We have students who attend school just to be eligible. We have students who may be on the verge of failing a class, but knowing that that will make them ineligible. They work hard to maintain that eligibility status. It's my fear that if we, if we lower this standard and lower these requirements to be eligible, those students may not work as hard, that we are going to see an increase in absences and an increase in failing grades. Is that something that has been thought of?
Well, we haven't talked about it, but, but what I will say about the attendance piece is while we will, I mean, if, if it passes, we will eliminate the attendance piece as far as eligibility goes. I, I think there'll probably be some serious discussions on how far we want to go with still allowing students to participate as they normally would if they're not in school that day. For example, if they're not in school on a particular day that's game day, I think they, they can't play or they have to be in there for a part of the day, half the day in order to participate. There may be some things that we need to take a look at in that regard that may not necessarily be completely tied to the policy. So, but again, we haven't, you know, it's hard to say a whole lot. We haven't had those discussions. So the information that you shared is certainly good for us to, you know, have some further discussion in preparation for the changes if they do get passed.
Okay. And one last thing, you know, it's, it's, and I know these are tough questions, but this is, I heard a lot of people that were upset when we made just that little touch from the 2.25 to the 2.0 GPA a couple of years ago. And one thing that really was a comment that I heard and I can actually resonate with, you know, is it's our mantra to produce students that are career and college ready. The attendance issue is something that really stands out to me because that's not something that reality looks in a positive way. You know, once you graduate high school, we're dealing with young adults at this age in high school. And in just a few short years, either they're going to be joining the workforce or they're going to be attending college or perhaps the military. And there will be very strict standards on having to show up and at least be there. You know, if you're there, you show up and try, that, that carries a lot of weight in a lot of things. And if you work for someone and you don't show up, well, you're not going to have a job very long. I, I just think that eliminating the attendance requirement altogether could set students up for failure in the long run when they leave, leave Charles County Public Schools.
Yeah, I think that's a perspective that is well received. I think it would behoove us that if we remove that, this particular part of the policy to ensure that, that doesn't mean that we condone that students don't come to school. Some of it will be, you spoke about unintended consequences. Some of the students who, if they decide not to keep coming to school, then their grades are going to suffer. That's, that's just a fact. You gotta be here to, to do as well as what you possibly can. And so some of that would come into play. But certainly we, we wouldn't, I guess, promote that, you know, you don't have to be here type of, type of, that certainly wouldn't be the case. We still would, I mean, those are life lessons, like you said. We still would impress upon our students. I would think that it's important to show up because this is preparing you for the next level, not, not just getting out of high school. You do have to show up to work. And so, so, you know, so those are the kinds of things that we certainly would still promote. Again, not necessarily tied to the policy, but it wouldn't mean that we condone kids just not coming to school. We certainly would continue to fight, you know, that battle as well.
That's all I have. I appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you both.
Thanks. Ms. Morley.
Yes, thank you both for this presentation. I know there are many of us that feel very strongly and several of us that have children currently in Charles County Public Schools. And as always, this, this would impact our own children. So we always have that in the back of our mind. I can use one example. My daughter at 16 had a knee replacement and was on crutches for quite a while. It was incredibly painful for her and she's not an athlete. It's, it's not her gift, but she is very, very connected and was connected to SGA, to Model UN, to French Club, to other things. And that kept her going. So for me, we cannot ever underestimate the importance of the children's mental health and what these types of things do. And I know we've heard a lot about that athletics, but it's well beyond that for many students. Because for those who are not athletes, this is their outlet. This is their opportunity to connect with their peers, to build relationships with, you know, the, the teachers, with the coaches, and also to candidly, for many of them, have a safe space for whatever they may be going through. And then even well beyond just college, these are life skills that they're learning. And part of that is, you know, to your point, cause I can, I can imagine playing devil's advocate, a parent saying, well, what's my incentive then for my child to show up if there is no attendance requirement? Well, you still are gonna at some point be facing truancy. So it's not like, you know, we're saying, well, don't ever show up to school at all and there won't be any consequences. But perhaps, just throwing it out there, we could maybe meet in the middle instead of no attendance requirements. Perhaps we could increase the amount of allowable absences. Because 4.5 sounds like a lot until you have a child that's sick for a week. And then there goes your eligibility for, for the entire quarter. And I've been there several times. And I had a couple of points. Oh, also, I, I don't think we can stress enough that ultimately attendance is on the parents more so than the students. And there are a lot of reasons why students may not come to school. And it's not always because they don't want to come to school. There are a lot of factors. So I think that if we're looking at the whole child and what motivates that child, then we need to consider that whether they're FARM students, whether they're special education students, there are a lot of different things that go into, I'm here today, I'm present, you have no idea what it took for me to get to this place. And now you're taking away the one thing that maybe I look forward to, you know? So I don't want to say that it, it should be a free for all and you, you know, you have no attendance requirements, you have no GPA requirement. I know there are people that are going to want to go to that extreme. I'm, I'm not at that extreme, but I think that we shouldn't view these, these clubs, the honor society, you know, pep squad, band, football, whatever it is. I don't think we should view these as extracurricular in the sense that they're not necessary. Because for many, they are absolutely necessary. And I don't know if this is the point to raise this, but another concern that's brought to me by a couple of parents, in particular of students that may have special needs, is that if you get that F and you retake the class, but that F remains on your report card, you can't ever really move past that, you know? So I want us to also consider, if I retake the class, remove the F. If I then get a C or a B, allow me to move on from it. Because that's typically what would happen in college. It's not going to always weigh you down so that you can never move up. So I want us to consider that as well. If we're truly trying to help our students be successful, then set them up for success. And allow them every opportunity. And I appreciate what Ms. S. Thomas mentioned about the NCAA requirements because are we really doing our students a disservice in having a policy that's so strict that it's not even something that once they leave our doors that they necessarily need to consider? Like to whom does that benefit is what I would say, you know? So I had a few points. A lot of them have been raised. I'd like the idea of the required tutoring. I understand why it may get some pushback, but my response would be because you're looking to do something in addition to. You're not just coming to school every day. You're coming to school every day, but you feel connected to, you know, the football team or the step team or whatever it may be. And so as part of that, as part of your way in, as part of your, you know, yeah, in the real world, you, you work hard, you get a reward. Part of your reward for going to tutoring, if you are struggling, is then you get to do this thing that you consider fun, that, that you want to excel at, that maybe beyond this, if you don't go to college when you leave here, this becomes your, your employable skills, you know? So I think if we're trying to truly help all students succeed, this is, this is huge. This is, this is a very, very big deal for me. I believe, oh, I think I touched on all of that. I also wanted to talk about, and you know, probably don't have data on this, but something to consider as we propose this to the community, helping the community understand the correlation between the extracurricular activities and the incentive. And I think this is probably something that our student member can speak to very well. Is that truly an incentive for you? I suspect for many of them it is, you know, to be able to, to compete, to be able to perform. Because for many of them candidly, school is just the means to the end. What I'm really passionate about is playing a sport or playing this instrument and that's what's going to lead to my success in the future. This geometry class, I'm going to be candid, I can't remember a thing I learned in geometry. It was a means to an end. I'm sorry. It was a means to an end. Now, I still had to get through it. Yeah. You still have to get through it. So I'm not saying you don't have to, but just be candid, many of the students, it's something they do at once and they may never use it again. So again, when we're looking at what does success look like for these students, I personally want to see every student succeeding at whatever level is best for him or her. It's not, or they, whatever their, their chosen pronouns may be, but it's not just this one standard, this one metric. Because with 20 something thousand students, I don't even think that's realistic. But thank you all again.
Bella Washington.
Ms. Perkins.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thomas, Ms. Creamer, Ms. Morley kind of took half the words out of my mouth. Thank you. My first question was, so let's say that like at the beginning of the first quarter, a student may have an F. If they bring that up in the middle of the quarter, would they be eligible to play or no?
As it stands right now, no.
Okay.
So, and that, that wasn't what we had proposed today, but I did hear something similar to that, the whole conversation about being able to redeem. I think that's what I heard mentioned earlier.
Yes, but our current policy, the answer's no.
Correct.
My second thing, Ms. Thomas had brought up a student opinion. I honestly do think that that is a good idea for those who are athletes or even just other clubs like SGA, Key Club, everything like that, and getting their input on what they think about it. Because like she said, it impacts us, it affects us. Also back to what Ms. Creamer had said and Ms. Morley about the motivation and I have seen it personally, like the students who play football, who play sports, who are really like into it, soccer, everything like that, that's what motivates them to get good grades. I've seen, even though like, no offense to my school, but we suck at football personally. We, we suck. But I love our team because they were motivated. Every time they had a game, even though they knew they may lose or whatever, they were still motivated. They fought till the end. So they were passionate about it. And but not also.
The girl soccer team.
Yeah, the girl soccer team, yeah. They were passionate about it. Also, this doesn't only affect athletes and the different clubs, but this also affects the managers that help out with those sports. Because what happens is all of these teams, at some point they build a connection. So it's stronger than just the sport. It's stronger than just, it's something to do. This is something that they're passionate about. They've built connections. So when they're not able to play, it affects them. And then also like Ms. Morley brought up, it also affects their mental health too. Which then that could also impact you academically. Because if I'm not right mentally, I'm not going to perform great academically and then now it's just a lose-lose everywhere.
Ms. Bella Washington.
I got a little different spin on this. With all the numbers of the students that will be able to play, reality, they will not all play on the team. The football can't take everybody. We know that. That's why you have to try out, cut. Basketball, soccer, lacrosse, all of them do the same thing. I'm looking at this as a life lesson. When you get to a job, they're not going to lower their standards to higher dotary. They're not going to do that. I'm going to have to perform. And we want to be able to teach our children to perform in things that they want to do. And when you have sports, let's face it, sports is a, it's not a right. It is a condition for you to be able to play extracurricular. So we have to spin this thing and tell our students that these are the things you want to do, we're rooting you on, we'll give you everything you need, but you got to perform. You got to bring the grade. You have to do it. It's not just for, we understand that you don't. We're going to give you all the tools to make sure you succeed. We should not lower our standards. Because when I went to school, see, the school didn't tell me, mother told me, you get an F, matter of fact, you get below, in a C, you're not playing. That was my trigger. I wanted to be, play basketball, majorette and, and soccer. Those are my three things. I knew I had to pass all year round because they all different season. So that was my motivation because it got me out the house, got me with my friends and stuff. That was the motivation. So I don't want to set the standards to say if we give this benefit, but all the kids are not going to be able to get on all these teams. They're not. So are we really doing something? So if they don't play, we haven't even asked the, the students, do you want to play sports? Suppose that the kids that we're talking, that we doing this policy for, they don't even want to play sports. That cannot be their driver. It cannot be their driver. The driver is, I want to do it and I am going to put in the work to do it because the school is going to give me the tools to do it. So that's my access on this because when you talk about grades, if you look at this chart you put up, the one where all the schools, what they done, if you want to be realistic, Prince George County has all the athletes, NBA, everywhere. They don't have a failing grade, they don't have attendance, they got a 2.0. I'm just telling you where the people are coming from, from NBA and we know these people. They did not lower their standards. They said 2.0, if you don't do the rest, you're not going. I don't care how good you are. So, you know, that's my selling point on making sure that we stay above the stray because we are the adults in here. We understand that our children want to do these things. We understand if, if you fail a grade, it's consequences. If I don't pay my car note, it's consequences. It's always a consequence. So we cannot make it a situation where a child can get out of something because they're going to build on that. And when they get to the real world, it's going to be the same thing. So, but this real world is going to tell them, no, the school tricked you. It don't work like that in the real world. We want to prepare them for the world, not for a moment. They're going to go, we want them to strive to be the best that they're going to be. I'm going to leave it like that.
Yes, I, I don't think it's my role to, to agree or disagree. We were sharing the information. Much received your opinion, just as we did everyone else's.
I, I do, if I may, just want to do a clarification, Ms. Butler Washington. If we can put that chart back up just to clarify.
This one?
No, 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 the, all the school systems. So you mentioned Prince George's County. So Prince George's County's requirement right now is a 2.0 GPA regardless of how many Fs you have. Attendance is not, so, so you could, you could have, you could have two failing grades in Prince George's, but as long as you have a 2.0 GPA, you can play. That's all they require. It's the opposite. I apologize. Yes. So the ones, the, Charles County has a GPA requirement, it's got no failing grades and it has that attendance requirement, which puts it at the very top because nobody else has an attendance requirement and, and no failing grades. Except Carroll County has a 2.0 GPA and no failing grades. And so that's, that's, and that's how it goes. So the, the ones in the green, they can have up to one failing grade. And, you know, we often see this, this is because it's by quarters. You often see a kid who gets an F a quarter and then brings it back up and goes down. You know, you have that deviation and so that's why a lot of counties, some of the counties in green said, well, we don't want to do more than just one. You better just have one where you had, you know, you don't like your Spanish teacher or you can't, you can't do Spanish for like one marking, but you better bring it up. And that's kind of how the greens kind of fall. And then everybody underneath that doesn't even, like the ones in the blue don't even discuss the failing grades. And then you see like Hartford County doesn't even put a GPA. It just says, as long as you don't have any failing grades. So it's interesting the way these boards think about this, right? Everybody, we all have to have a standard. The question is, what's the right standard? And that is the discussion that you all have to have about what, what does that mean? So I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. And Ms. Perkins, do you have a comment?
Yes, so I wanted to go back to the tutor requirement thing. I do think that that could be something that is beneficial because if the sport or the club is something that you want to do when you have that failing grade, well, okay, we're
well, okay, we're giving you, like Ms. Washington said, we're giving you the tools to strive. We're giving you, okay, well, if you do this tutoring and you bring that grade up to a C or a B or whatever, then you're eligible to play. But also not just being required for sports. Because I mean, if it's a class that you need to pass, you need to do something to pass it. You can't just fail the class because then you're not going to pass. So, with grade recovery, if a student fails a class and they do grade recovery, would they be able, like eligible to play after that?
Not in the current policy.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that we brought up is, is if you, if you prove success, as Ms. Morley said, if you're in college and you retake a class, that old grade goes away. At least in most universities.
And the way the grade recovery works anyway though, they're recovering the grade from the previous quarter. And so, they, you know, they got an F that quarter so they weren't eligible then. And in most cases, we're in a different season around the time that our, that our quarters change. And so, so they wouldn't, right now, the way it works, yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay. Yeah, Ms. Warren.
A lot of things going on after hearing everybody talking and the teacher in me is crying out and this and that, you know. But, um, one of the things I was going to ask is, this might sound like a crazy question, but the origin, like, I guess why is this conversation so important? Why is it so necessary to, to, to make these changes, you know, to the policy? Was there some data that, you know, like, like a bunch of kids knocking on the door, please? You know, I just want to know what brought about that. And it was something else that I wanted to say that I really want to remember. I can't remember at the moment, but let's start there. Maybe it'll come back to me.
So, I'm going to, I'll tell you who was responsible, person to my left here. So, she'll speak to it, you know, I'm just kidding you. So, I know you want to respond to that.
Yeah, so you know, it's, it's an interesting, like I said to you, this is a discussion and I had it with the previous board. And I think, you know, if you go back, you see how much they struggled and the data they had to go through to figure out what makes sense for, for this county. But I look at policies in a way in which, we just had this question around the policies and the impact that they have for students. Do we have policies that open access and opportunity? The eligibility, there's a question on, is this, as, and I quote a former board member, you know, who was, who was very clear on their view around the eligibility policy. This is, this is a reward as, for you to participate in extracurricular activities as a result of, of you being a strong student. Sort of similar to Ms. Butler Washington's comment. And there is a spectrum throughout around, is it a carrot? Or is it, you know, is, is this an incentive to get kids to do really well? You heard from your fellow board members on different perspectives, whether they're their own children's perspective or other, or what they've heard. And I think it, it reaches throughout the gamut. My question on, on bringing the eligibility and frankly, next, the grading policy, is that I really want this board to struggle with major policies that have impact on students when we talk about access and opportunities and accountability. And I, I take Mr. Hancock's questions and I wrote down his follow-up questions. Importantly so, because if we offer access and opportunity, is it a, a strong return on the investment? Do students, because they have access to participate more in Key Club or Model UN or football, do they indeed do better as students? And I think we can probably run some interesting reports. I know I, I told the board how many more students were eligible as a result of their first change to the policy. But I think I'm going to go back and Steve may be listening to this. But, and I will pool those students and see what their current GPA looks like, what was it looking like before? GPAs are cumulative. So, it's harder and harder to, you know, if you don't, if you mess up a lot your first two years, to get your GPA back up to a certain level, it's harder, it's cumulative. And students who get access to Key Club and Mach UN and everything, Model UN, they put it on their resumes. And so, obviously, it's, you know, we, there's a question on, on who gets access then to put something that they did that was meaningful in school? What opportunities did they have? So, this is why, there's going to be several policies that I bring forward that I ask the board, is this the policy that you want to see for this point in time? And more importantly, what does that mean in terms of when I run the numbers for access and opportunity? Like I, like we did today, what does that mean? And that's why eligibility is one. Wait till we get to grading. Lots of questions. It's going to be spicy, spicy.
So, I did write down my question. So, speaking of access and opportunity, it was so many great points made. Hancock about the data to see what, you know, what has changed since we raised or lowered the GPA or, yeah, the GPA. Speaking of, and then Bella Washington about, you know, preparing kids for the future and not just for a moment. When you're talking about opportunity, my question, one of my questions is, will this impact, how does this, this is a lot. But what's the relationship between this, this, this 2.0 and all of these things that they're asking to change? And a student's ability to be eligible for the apprenticeships and things like that, the CTE? And does one have, you know what I'm saying?
So, those have nothing to do, so actually-
Will they be eligible?
So, apprenticeship, we don't have an eligibility requirement on apprenticeships. But we do have a GPA requirement for other things. We have a GPA requirement right now, from you, you heard it this morning at the legislative breakfast, on dual enrollment and early college. The, the GPA requirement is a, what's the, what is it?
2.75.
2.75 is the, is the GPA requirement. So, there are, there are requirements in academic programming to do certain academic programs, yes.
And I, you know, I just, I just feel like the push for this, and I can appreciate you looking at the policy and, you know, because everything starts with policy. But just the push for it, it'd be nice to see this across all curricular areas to the point of, oh, you know, we just need tutoring for, well, you out didn't say this, but having tutoring for those that may be failing, who want to play sports. But not only just for those folks, but having it for people who don't play sports. You know, like the push for those kinds of things to, you know, raise academic achievement.
Yeah, and principals are getting very creative with their tutoring opportunities because they're doing it during the school day so that kids can't have excuses not to do tutoring. So, right now, if we had principals here, they would talk about the different ways in which they're incorporating mandatory tutoring for certain things during the school day. Because students are not doing very well. So, sometimes that may involve if they're doing extended lunches or if they're doing sort of cycles of doing that. So, we haven't just, just because we are discussing it at this level, we haven't done a mandate system-wide. But we have absolutely been pushing for principals to find ways to get those kids in front of tutors, either before, after school, but also during the school days. And a lot of schools have started using it during the school days so you don't have an excuse of, I didn't have the computer at home or something like that, for that support. We just haven't said it is a requirement that you do specific tutoring.
And just for the record, you know, I was an athlete. I ran track in high school and middle school. I played tennis for five minutes in college. So, I think, you know, I was a part of some extracurricular activities too in college. But I think for me, and I'm not saying, like, I know we have very bright, creative students. So, I'm, you know, this is going to be an interesting conversation. But I don't want to make our students weak in a sense. And, you know, not ready for the world. And I'm not saying that this will make them weak, but I just, there has to be a standard. And we did, we have done a good job of keeping a standard. And whatever, whatever the outcome is, I just want to say that it's not, failure happens, but it's not okay in a sense of, you know, not caring about your grades. So, that's for the students. Or just wanting to show up. Every, every class counts. Every class, TV class, every, because you can glean from, I think Morley talked about the skills, you know, from the class or the course. So, that's, that's the main thing that, that I want students to know, that every class counts, every class is important. There's something to be learned in every class, so.
Do you have some, Ms. Thomas?
I, I guess one of the points that I would like us to remember because I think the tutoring component is really important. I think that was raised. Whenever you're participating in extracurricular activity, you think about the time that they put into that. So, I just challenge each one of you to get up in the morning and do your whole job, pay attention, go spend two, three hours of rigorous physical activity, and then go home and do two hours of homework. And then do your activities on the weekends and then do it again. Because many of us would not be able to do that and we're asking students. So, it's the balance. And I only say that because it teaches a lot of the things that Ms. Warren just raised, also Ms. Butler Washington raised. We are teaching them something. Activities build community. And community builds inclusiveness and belongingness. And that's what we really want in our school district, right? In addition to that, when people are recruiting and you put things like I was at Model UN and these things on your resume, there are corporations that go specifically to recruit athletes to be their corporate leaders. Because it builds leadership skills, being able to follow instructions and direction and be a team builder. So, I really think that we just have to innovatively think about the way. Because I, the current policy, I think, if I, and if I'm wrong, it's on the record, it says it's a privilege to be in extracurricular activities. I arduously disagree. It's not a privilege. It's part of our community and it's what we building. And I think we need to look at the policy the same way. Which is why our first community that we go talk to is the students. It's their community.
Couple, Ms. Perkins? So, we got to wrap up because we are woefully behind.
I just wanted to go back to what Ms., I mean, Dr. Navarro was saying about the tutoring inside of schools. So, I don't know for any other school, but I know from my school, what we started doing was a 30-minute extension period for each class. So, every day it switches or whatever. It starts with Monday, it starts with first period. And we have 30 minutes extended. So, in that 30 minutes, we can get extra help. We can go to our teachers and ask them like, okay, I'm struggling with this. Or even just making up work. So, we can't say, oh, well, I didn't have time to do this or I couldn't do this at home or I had something to do. So, you can't make that excuse. And then I had a question. So, what if a student is failing? Or like they don't have necessarily like a passing grade, but they're trying? Like they're putting in the work, they're trying, they're doing the work, but it's just something that they're not getting?
As it stands right now, if it's an F.
Oh, okay.
So, so a couple of things. The attendance part, so it's four and a half days. So, for the board's knowledge, that, that was a completely arbitrary number. That's 10% of a quarter, right? It's 45 days in a quarter and it's 10% of a quarter. So, if you want to know where that number came from, that, that's where it came from.
Really tough to track at Synergy too, by the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, it is.
I think, but that's, that's where it came from. So, there was discussion about, you know, perhaps broadening that. Honestly, I, I don't, for, for 99% of the kids, I don't know why they have an unexcused absence. You don't need a note from a doctor anymore. If you're sick, you're sick. Your parent says you're sick, you're good. I mean, so it, it boggles me that there's so many unexcused absences. Because we, we took care of a lot of that a few years ago. We revised the policy so that it was very easy, even to do after the fact. It was, so the fact that we have those unexcused absences now is, still makes my head scratch. So, the farms numbers, and I don't know if you presented that to us before. I, I don't think you did because that really jumped out at me. Ms. Creamer mentioned it. So, that's, that's half. That's half the students. So, half the students are farm students. It'd be beneficial, I think, if we had, if we could get a breakout, you could send it, weekly updates. I think this should be easy by school, by high school.
These numbers?
By high school, by high school. Yeah, we won't, yeah. Because that's, that, that honestly, that, that number surprised me that it was, it was that high. That, that literally is half, right? I mean, it's 1,100 students and it's, it's 550 and 540 respectively that you show in the farm stuff. So, so half of the people that would become eligible if you, if you adopted the proposed changes would come from the farms population, if I'm reading all this correctly. Yeah, so if we had that by high school, I think that would be good. Because to, to the conversation about, you know, tutoring and, and extra support for the student, I mean, if we find that it's focused in one or two schools, then perhaps the answer is to focus on those one or two schools, right? And in addition to possibly doing some other changes. And also, if, is, is it possible to get, and this may be a little bit of, too much of an ask, what classes, the students, when they have Fs, what classes those are? Maybe they're, they're too far spread out to make any statistical difference. But, but maybe there's a common theme there that there's classes. I appreciate the discussion. It's good. And, and you know, to Ms. Smich Thomas's point, right? It's, it's, you know, certainly it's fair to say education's different than it was 40 and 50 years ago. And, and you, you're about providing as much opportunity for kids as possible. Admittedly though, if, if, if any standard is lower, there's less of an impetus to, if you're, if you want to participate, to do better, at least for the purposes of participating in that extracurricular activity. But to everyone else's comments, it does help you get more engaged in the whole school culture. And that's what we're trying to do from a holistic level. And, and we can talk about data all you want. I think it's real hard, even with the changes that were proposed, right? So, those, those cohorts of kids are gone from the school system now. So, now you have a new cohort coming as, as they matriculate through the grades. And, you know, how many of those kids are actually even going to participate? You have no way of knowing that. And, and you're doing the best you can with the data. But if we can get those two things, I think that'd be helpful for all of us going forward. So, echo everyone's comments. Very good presentation. Lots, lots of good data. Are we good for going on or do we need a break? Break, okay, I have a break. Okay, so let's take 10 minutes and then come back. Okay, welcome back everybody. Ms. Acton. And-
And friends.
And friends.
Ms. Acton and friends. Ms. Miller, Ms. Fisher Davis.
No telling what you might ask. I need, I need all my friends.
Evening ladies.
Hello, hello. Nice to see you again today.
All right.
All right, so Board Chair Lucas, Vice Chair Morley, board members, Dr. Navarro's staff and stakeholders. I'd like to introduce Ms. Karen Acton, Chief Financial Officer, Sherry Fisher Davis, Budget Manager. And I am Chris Miller, your Blueprint Implementation Coordinator. And we are here to talk to you about the implications of the budget when it comes to the blueprint. We talked a little bit about this this morning. As Dr. Navarro's, our term, we gave you a little appetizer to talk about the 75-25 funding. I think this is going to be a continued discussion. This is not going to be something that we just glance over. But we wanted to bring it to you early so we can start thinking with a different lens when we're talking about the budget. So, we're going to look at what the law is. We're going to look at how we currently report on our budget. We're going to look at what the blueprint is requiring us to do when it comes to reporting. We're going to look at the potential impact of change. You know, we like to look at our crystal ball and think about, anticipate some things that, some implications that we may have. And then we're going to look at two very similar schools. And by similarities, I mean that they are similar in the number of students that they serve, just so we can see a potential example when it comes to this. So, according to the blueprint, each district, we have to be able to show that each school was budgeted and utilized 75% of the total blueprint fund- that each school was budgeted and utilized 75% of the total blueprint funding. So that's defined by, minimum school funding is 75% of the per pupil amount. And as Karen told us earlier today, that is both the state and the local blueprint funds for that. For each school, the county board, we will distribute the minimum school funding amount for the applicable program multiplied by the school enrollment. And that is beginning for July 1, 2024. So for fiscal year '25 and each July 1 thereafter, the county board shall report on the county board's compliance with this section. And as you know, we report on how we spend our money. There's lots of blueprint reports that are due throughout the school year. And we do post this information on our blueprint webpage. So these are the prescriptive formulas that determine the amount of funding that each LEA will receive for each of the student groups. So we look at the basic foundation funding. We look at compensatory education, English language learners, special education, pre-kindergarten, transitional supplemental instruction, college and career readiness, the comparable wage index, and concentration of poverty. So as we go through this presentation, and Karen gets into more detail with this, keep in mind that not all of our schools here in Charles County will receive funding in each of these categories. We only have, right now, five community schools. So that's where we get our concentration of poverty. Transitional supplemental instruction is only for K through school, K through three schools for students that are struggling. So as we go through this presentation, keep that in mind that not every school is going to receive funding in each of these categories.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the current funding allocation process that we have right now, which is that MSDE sends funds to the LEA based on the wealth equalized formulas. And many of these are wealth equalized. And the county funding is driven by maintenance of effort. We create a budget based on those categories. We send small discretionary allotments to the schools. And we, we report back to MSDE by the expenses for those state categories. But we're doing it in total for the, for the school system. Expenditures currently are centralized for the most part. Some things have been allocated out to the schools, but that hasn't been our general process, including utilities, maintain materials of instruction, salaries, and other bulk spending. So that's kind of at the crux of this change is that we have to change how we do business and how we allocate expenditures. So on the next slide, we're going to talk about what the blueprint funding allocation process is. So MSDE will send funds to us based on wealth equalized formulas, but it's also based on these categories in the blueprint. For instance, basic foundation is, is on total enrollment by school. Compensatory education is on farms numbers per school. English learners is based on those number of students within each school. Special ed, pre-K is kind of self-explanatory. TSI, as Chris mentioned, is struggling learners in K through three. College and career readiness are those that have achieved by school, by 10th grade for AP and CTE. Comparable wage index is a regional difference that is given to different, different LEAs based on the cost to produce, to provide those services in that regional area. And then you have concentration of poverty, which is the community schools, which is based on 60% farms. So in this situation here, now that we're going, we have to budget this way, but we also have to allocate our expenditures this way. The county must match the local share for blueprint. If MOE exceeds that local share, then they give us MOE. So it, it depends on, on how it works. Right now, they give us MOE. But the formulas for blueprint change every year based on how much the state is giving and how much the county has to give. So those numbers will continue to change. So the reporting requirement currently is that we have to report on all of these categories for each individual school in Charles County. Not even in total by the school, but each of these categories. And that's a little bit of a challenge.
May I interject for a second? So I just want to contextualize this a little bit. Let's take the English learner fund. So per the blueprint, there's an additional funding tied to English learners. And the way we do our work currently, as Karen was talking about this, is that we will get that pot of funding, of funding, let's say we had 100 English learners in the school system. And centrally, we will take those funds and we would use all of those fundings for the 100 students. And we would figure centrally the allocations of how many ESOL teachers we need at each school site and make that all centrally. This is a shift where every student has an amount of funding. And so just think about an English language learner. That amount of funding has to follow the student to that school site. So before, schools are not really focusing on, you know, how much ESOL services they get. The central office sort of calculates about how many English language learners you have in your school. And this is about the allocation of a teacher FTE, full-time equivalent, that you're going to get. Now it's just the funding follows the student. The school doesn't necessarily know what the teacher's specific salary is or any of those logistics. But now the, the, the funding, when it gets to the student and it follows the student to a schoolhouse, it then generates a budget at the schoolhouse. So instead of the central office managing and sort of dealing with all of the funding, really it's each school having a set of funding depending on the students that it serves. And in the blueprint law, it has specific supports for specific subgroups of students, right? And, or subgroups of conditions of communities, like the community school piece. So that's an interesting piece to talk about. And I just wanted to remind you, the college and career blueprint dollars, as I mentioned this morning, the State Board of Education is discussing in its meeting next week, right? December 5th, or can't remember. But it's next Tuesday. What that CCR, that college and career readiness metric will be. When it sets that, that then ties to the blueprint law about which students we will get funding for at our high schools for that CCR metric. So that's an important piece. I just wanted to, to tie all those pieces together because I will be sending the board, the link to the board, to the state board meeting. So you final, so that we know what is the decision on that. Because it'll have funding implications even as we project out moving forward for our budget. So, sorry.
All right. So the potential impact of change. As we've talked about, the blueprint funding is going to vary based on the demographics of the students in each school. Resource allocation will need to be distributed based on the funding and the needs of each school, which is different than what we've necessarily been doing. And expenditures, expenditures for each school and program must be reported to MSDE. And then the potential school comparison. We have two schools up on the screen for you. School A, they, they both have similar enrollment, although School A has about 25 more students than School B, but that's very close. But you can see, if you go to the bottom, even though School A has 25 more students, they have about $1.1 million less based on the demographics of that school. And highlighted for you are the areas where it's impacted. Compensatory education is much lower in School A than in School B. You also have concentration of poverty money. As Chris said in the beginning, not all of that funding will be allocated to each school. So School B has concentration of poverty. The English learner funding is much different in the two schools. Special ed is, and so is pre-K. So in School A, we, we had basically low farms numbers, low ESOL, medium pre-K, and low special ed. School B had high farms, medium ESOL, high pre-K, and medium special ed. So that kind of shows you in a picture of the challenges that we might have and the decisions we might need to make based on the funding that will come down for each school.
Can I also just add for context? If you recall, 80 to 85%, I take nurses and contracted services for bus drivers. And when we take a look at nursing and transportation, 85% of our budget is tied to salaries. So once we pay salaries and benefits. So 85% of our, of our overall budget is tied to that. And I think that's an important piece as we look at the funding following the student. What does that mean as well?
So we don't have all the answers right now because we are not required to budget this way until the next fiscal year, which is the budget that Sherry is working diligently on. And we have started trying to report our expenses by school, but that's a new process because we have not allocated all of those expenses out. So if we, once we've done that process, you, this is showing you the 75% minimum. So there, there is additional funding, that additional 25% that could go to certain schools. There also is, you know, the overage that, that the county gives us beyond the blueprint that could go to these schools. But you also have central that is, that has to be funded. So that's, that's the big challenge. And you have different, you know, tenured teachers and what, and administrators and different schools that will have to play into that analysis. Are there questions?
Before we start questions, can I just sort of mention also? So we want to, we want to talk about this today. We want to hear some of the questions and comments from the board. But we intend to come back to the board with the budget, at the budget discussion, but later on also around what is the way we look at utilizing this requirement in the blueprint, in a blueprint as it was intended, which is to create innovative ways of looking at schooling and innovative ways of supporting the students with the greatest need. And so that's an important piece, I think you'll hear from us. We want to kind of get a sense from, from this board of how they're interpreting and what questions they have. And then we want to come back later and talk about what does that mean for our school systems as we take a look at where the funding eventually falls once we do this, this budget breakdown. And you can see more concretely across all of our schools, this is what it looks like.
And one other item that I failed to mention is that PZAM is going to present legislation. Instead of us having to report by each of the blueprint categories for each school, that we change the requirement so that it is the total dollars that go to each school that we have to report it that way, which allows a little more flexibility within the schools. But that hasn't passed yet, obviously, because they're just presenting it.
So I have a question. Let's suppose, let's suppose this year, we are budgeted by the state under the blueprint, $100 million, just to make it easy to think about. The superintendent allocates that money as the superintendent sees fit. And it's going to be based largely on, on just student population at schools. And she'll ultimately staff to that. So next year, is, is the formula for the blueprint different? Or would we get, all things being equal, would, would we get that same $100 million, but it'll be more prescriptive, it'll be broken out by school?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so my question is then, if I'm, and we have the commissioners with us this morning, if I'm a commissioner, do I worry about that from, from the fact that there are resource sponsors? Because when I looked at this, it didn't sound like, from a local level, they would have to potentially come up with more funding. It's just that the, the funding would be more accountable on a school level. And again, unless I'm missing something. I didn't know if the formula was different and somehow now because of these areas. Okay, so it really is just.
So we'll have the total amount of money that we would have had this year, you know, based on enrollment. But.
Got it.
It's, okay.
So we talked about it earlier and Dr. Navarro brought it up. You know, it's that conversation that we need to have about equity versus equality. You know, equality is giving everybody a shoe. Equity is giving everybody a shoe that fits. And so this budget is really fitting the needs of the schools.
Sure, sure, no, that, understand that. I just wanted to make sure that there was no potential greater financial impact on, on a local level.
Other than what already is.
Other, yeah, other than that, yeah. Not so insignificant fact that.
Yes.
But, but I, I will say, from a blueprint perspective, Charles County was in a much better place than the majority of the state. But a budget is more than the blueprint. So when other things rear the rug we had, then we have to, to make tough decisions. But I'll stop now. Ms. Smith and then Ms. Thomas.
Thank you Chairman Lucas. And I think my question's probably in the same vein as yours, which is, I'm trying to understand if this is more so informational and that this is coming down the pike and this is going to look different than what we've done in years past? Or if there is some underlying concern or issue you'd like for us to be aware of as we begin moving toward this new kind of structured budget?
So I'll get it started. So the way, since most of our funding is tied to salaries, and the way it works is that a more experienced teacher is more costly than others. We have schools, and our, and, and our Title I schools and our high poverty schools tend to have newer teachers. So there is something to be said about thinking about where our more experienced teachers usually are teaching. And, and while we, and we did this exercise actually last year with Nikki and we went to the union to EACC. And I have to say, EACC is sitting here shoulder to shoulder with us, trying to figure out the implications of what that is. So not only do we have a wonderful support at the, at the, from the county commissioners in terms of, of funding, but we are also not in an adversarial situation with our union, which is really helpful to try to figure out these very complex systems. When, we did last year a distribution of where all our tenure teachers are, that have been here the longest. Because one of our interests was to not have any school that had a high percentage of new teachers. We wanted to have a mixture of teachers who are in their first three years and then in their first 10 years and then 15 years and 20-plus years. We do have, as it is true in, in, in many places, some schools that have higher, that have higher numbers of students impacted by poverty, for example, who tend to have larger percentage of brand-new teachers. And so what we want to sort of queue up is that we are thinking about this work that the blueprint puts out there in a way that allows us to think of a school like School B that clearly has a higher concentration of needs, to be thinking about it in a way that we can have a teaching and learning environment that can be innovative and will attract and retain a lot of tenure teachers. Doesn't have to be all tenure teachers, but it won't be a school that, that constantly has a lot of brand-new teachers teaching in it. And the question is, how do we do that? Is something that we're just starting to come together with. We're going to start a work group, including EACC, to start thinking about what, how we could do this work. That's really the reform work that the blueprint is calling for. And meet the requirement of the law that says, you know, school, these schools need to be funded at this level. And we have to sort of make some tough decisions because we also don't want to negatively impact other areas of our county as well. And therein lies the complexity of thinking about how do we do that innovation at the same time that we. same time that we keep certain standards throughout all of our schools.
And just to, to also say that if we don't show the proper use of the, that funding, that seventy-five percent minimum, then future funding is withheld from us, there's a penalty. So, we have to figure this out, we have to make sure that we're utilizing the funds in, in each particular school the way it's intended.
And just a brief follow-up, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
What is the timeline for ensuring that we get it right? Like recognizing, I'm hearing you all say that we're not reporting the financials in this way currently, but we're moving toward it. What's the, July, July one?
July one-twenty-four, however, we have in a different format, have, we've been required to report school-level spending. So at least for the past, you know, three or four years, we've had to submit a report to MSD that shows how much is spent at each school level, how much is at the central office level. So, we've, we've been building up to this point, but seven-one-twenty-four is the budget that needs to be seventy-five-twenty-five. So we've reported the expenditures, but we have not aligned it with the budget that, that reflects this.
So we don't yet know how far we off, are off from that seventy-five-twenty-five split?
No, we did an analysis that showed there were some challenges, but it's not...
Egregious.
It's, it's significant enough that we need to talk about it as a board, and so this is the initial conversation. We did some analysis because we needed to push, to put back some expenses at schools. Again, we've been central for a very long time, and we are rerunning the numbers. But regardless of how you run the numbers, the fact that the blueprint requires seventy-five percent of the expenses to follow kids, frankly, in higher impacted schools, you're going to see more funding, because that's the intent of the blueprint, than lower impacted schools in our county. And so, we are going to see deltas, and in this case, this is a pretty accurate, this is, this is, you know, we didn't name the schools, but this is a pretty accurate example of some of our biggest deltas. And so a million, a million to two million differences in elementary schools or in schools of a certain size, five hundred or whatever the number was, I can't remember, is significant. If we estimate, I don't know, an average teacher salary, that's an average teacher salary, Sheri tells me to calculate it a hundred and seven thousand. So, with benefits, a hundred and seven thousand, with benefits. In some of our schools, if we were to calculate that, average teacher salary in one school, it may be a hundred and twenty thousand, and then you go to another school, and the average salary in another school may be seventy-eight thousand. So, the deltas are there, and, and it's interesting around how do we make innovative changes that our staff can get behind? That's the most important thing. How do we get innovative changes and opportunities that our staff can get behind and support?
Appreciate the precursor, looking forward to the rest of the conversation.
Thank you. I'm all about the numbers, so this is good to see the numbers and the modeling. I think, one of the things that you, you know, Dr. Navarro, you said is that if eighty-five percent of the, the funding, or the expenditures are salary and benefits, if you pull that out and you do the model based on taking that out, because you talked about that, and you just look at the non-salary and benefits funding that's left at the schools, so if you take the teacher salaries out, if you've done a model that way, that kind of tells you now, what are, what are you, what are you left to then allocate across the schools? Because it's kind of, I'm thinking it's a balance for you, right? You have a lot of autonomy now to kind of shuffle things as you need to, and you kind of lose that. But, if you go back to the blueprint and say, for us, the salary is a, is a huge piece, how do we balance with, with taking salary out, redacting that part?
So I would say that in order to balance a difference between these two schools of a million dollars, you can't do it without doing salaries. So you got to take some of, and I would look to Sheri, Sheri is my sort of guru on this, but you, you're going to have to, there's going to be implications on maybe getting more related services funding for counseling or anything like that, but really to make a million or plus changes, you're taking people whose salaries are higher, more tenured folks, and moving them to the schools where there's the bigger sort of need. And that is not the natural distribution in public education.
Right.
And so I think the other thing we need to think about is, when you're not talking just about salaries, what other things will people go to certain schools to work for? And that's what the, the core committee, including the union, and we're going to get some feedback from our teachers and our administrators on this, what would that be? And so it calls for other things that are also called for in the blueprint that actually do, will cost a lot more on the local side funding, which could be an extended day, or a co-teaching model, right? Or it could be, you know, our career ladder with a teacher lead who models a classroom for part of the day, and then, you know, supports other teachers for part of the day. And so those things are more expensive to have, and as a structure for a school, but maybe the levers that attract very tenured, more expensive teachers to those schools. The superintendent has, right now, across the state, the ability to move staff as needed. But I would say that what we want to do is incentivize and inspire our, our, our teachers and our best teachers to be at some of the schools that where there's a concentration of higher numbers of students that need a lot of support.
Okay, yeah, that, because, you know, when you talk about that, that dollar amount, when I said, take the salaries out, to me, it wasn't take the salary out to distribute what else is left, but take the salary out and say, now that we have this and we know, I think Ms. Majors would have a, a lot of thoughts about, like, what do you do to incentivize teachers to take the more difficult? Because at the end of the day, the mission is to educate children, but you can't do that without teachers, and, you know, you want to have them in the right place, based on the way the, the blueprint is distributing those salaries. And I think it's intended to, I mean, in, in a lot of counties, you have like wealthier counties who have a higher income than they get more money, and some of the ones that have less income, socioeconomically, historically have gotten less money. So I think they're trying to balance, and for us to keep the, or preserve the intent of that while still making sure that we're getting the need. And that's just, you got to think about how you move people. But, not voluntold, but, you know, a way that they want to do it.
Yeah, Ms. Kramer.
Thank you all for this presentation. I think the chart was most helpful for me, the comparison, because that really sort of illustrates for me what you meant. And so the first thing I wrote down was my question, which is what Ms. Smith got to, was that, will this mean that higher paid or more tenured teachers are going to move sort of towards those higher need schools? And it sounds like that is exactly what the design is, and under the blueprint, that makes sense. I just think, and I know you touched on this a little bit, Dr. Navarro, I think the main point, again, as with so many things, is messaging to our teachers, so I'm glad to hear that we're working with EACC, because I think they're going to be instrumental in that. But, you know, if we can just break it down and explain the why, and then also look at ways that we can incentivize, I feel like, you know, our teachers that are tenured teachers and who have that experience and, and are truly dedicated to their, their craft are going to, I, I think we're going to be able to get them to buy in. It's not like we're asking them to take like a cut in salary, you know? We're just saying, hey, we need you more in these other spaces, and here's some things that we're going to do to sort of help, you know, incentivize you to, to do that. So, appreciate this presentation, and like I said, the, the chart was really illustrative, so that was great, thanks.
Mr. Hancock.
Thank you Chairman. Real quick, thank you for the update, and it is very important, and it's actually really, you know, cool to see it on paper to help it all make sense. And just, I want to offer my support to the superintendent in her approach to trying to attract tenured teachers to where, where they are needed. You know, when you're, you're a tenured teacher that has been around a while, you often get that luxury that comes with seniority to where you can go where you want to go and do what you want to do. But you don't want to force any staff member to do anything, because then you run the risk of losing that value, very valuable instructor from any school. So I like, I like the approach of thinking about incentives, and I would dare say, I know you can't talk contracts or anything like that, but I would dare say, you know, working with the union to see if they would be open to any kind of compensation that we, that we could work on, you know? Because at the end of the day, money talks. When you've been around a while, and you're going to ask me to go to a place I don't want to go, you know, there's a price for everything. And, you know, it's, and it is, I agree with Ms. Kramer and some others, that working with the EACC and, and the messaging and, and being out front, look, we're not trying to force anyone to do anything, but the law is going to require us to do something. How can we work together to, to make sure that everyone is happy in how we move forward? Great presentation, I appreciate it, thank you.
And keep in mind too, I mean, the research is clear too about retaining teachers, it's not all about the money.
Sure.
It's not, so we need to think, you know, creatively and, and really have the voice of the teachers as well. We need to have their input about why do you stay at a school? What are the reasons behind it? And remember, we do have the career ladder that we have to implement as well. So that goes hand in hand with this, to see how we can implement these innovative ideas, you know, to get our teachers to stay in these schools where our students need it the most.
Thanks. Ms. Butler-Washington.
Yes, so thank you for this presentation, it is great. It is a true equity plan. The reason I say that, because all students would be successful, and by putting the seasoned teachers in the schools where our students need them the most, that can only be the best for everybody. And so when you, when you do things like that, and I'm saying, a seasoned teaching, teacher will see the benefit, because they're the benefit. They're the one who's doing this. They're put first, they're put out there to help a child, and that's truly what a, I'm thinking what a teacher heart is, they just want to make sure that every child succeed, they want to do it in the best way they can do it. So by creating, the blueprint creating this for us, it really put it back to where it was before, back when I went to school, because that's what the teachers foremost was. It was making sure that everybody succeed, and they had a, they had a plan in it. And so that was enough for them. And I do understand, Mr. Hancock, when you say money talks, but I truly think a teacher is a different breed, because money do talk, but them putting their effort, their skill into building a child that they know once was broken, and now they have built them to give them the skills they have, and they go out and flourish into life, that's a bigger picture for them. And that's a bigger picture for anybody, because I beg the different, even for me, if you say, I go out and do something, if it's my true passion, money can outdo my passion, because I did what I love to do. And that builds me, and it builds everything about me, and it says who I am. So I think, and I'm giving the teachers kudos, because I know they will come together, and they will bond together, and they will do what their truer hearts are meant to do. So, this is a great way of making sure that equity is across the line for everybody.
Thanks. Ms. Morley.
Just one quick comment, and thank you, as my colleagues have said, for this presentation. I always enjoy these, you know, I'm very partial to you, Ms. Miller, because I've been, I've been loving your blueprint updates. But with that said, and, you know, respectfully, we do need to look at what I've, at least what I've heard so far, is the number one potential incentive for teachers is housing. I know Ms. Kramer's touched on it before in this, in this session, we've had a small discussion. I think if there were anything else, there, and I'm sure there are other things, but that's, that's what I've personally heard the most, is, yes, it's, it's great to have a starting salary somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty-something, fifty-eight thousand dollars, but when housing is a half million dollars, you know, how is, how is that sustainable and affordable? I know we have a lot of international teachers that, that we've been able to attract, which is fantastic, and I love the diversity and the culture, but should they, you know, I know they have to go back and then, you know, come again, can they afford to do that? You know, can we afford to attract teachers from other areas? And can we, can we keep them? You know, if you can get them here with these higher starting salaries, but then can they live here? Is this sustainable? And I say this respectfully, on behalf of District Four, which has both extremes. When we did the data walk, we unfortunately had one of the highest, if not the highest areas of concentration of poverty, and we also have the highest starting prices for houses. So we, you know what I mean, we, we see a little bit of both. So, that is something that, and I know it's not, it's beyond just our scope here, so I, I understand that, but if, if there's something we can do, and it's wonderful to offer, you know, the degrees, you know, to be able to reimburse and all of that, but housing is something that will bankrupt many people, just being very candid with you, housing and, and medical bills. And I know we're doing as much as we can on the medical end, but, oh bless you. So, that is, that is my two cents on that.
I, I mean, speaking as somebody who moved, you know, here twenty-plus, I mean, I know, I know you guys thought...
As a toddler.
I mean, I, exactly. But, you know, my husband, who is also an educator, you know, we struggled the first several years, and, you know, it's not that we're not still struggling now, because we have two kids, and, man, they're expensive, but, you know, but, right, right, I'm going broke again. But, yeah, I know Dr. Navarro and I have talked about, you know, our wish to win the lottery and, you know, have, you know, teacher housing, but certainly I think it's something that, I think we all know that that is a, an issue here. And I would love to think of creative ways to solve that. Maybe I could rent my basement out and then solve my issue, my kids, right, I know, it's like, but, yeah.
Ms. Smith.
Just briefly, because I did speak on this issue already, but just wanted to note that retaining high-quality teachers in some of our higher poverty schools, our Title I schools, is not just a challenge in Charles County, it's a challenge nationally for years, for years, to the point where we've had some of our federal partners putting out policy around how can you retain some high-quality, and not just high-quality, but seasoned teachers, teachers who've been on the job for more than five years, more than three years? Because we do typically see that our lower-resourced schools, not in terms of finances, but in terms of teacher tenure, typically are our higher poverty schools. So it's not just a matter of what our educators are called to do, that this is not a profession, it's a passion, but we are seeing the trend that some of our, again, more seasoned teachers are in our, in other schools besides our higher poverty schools. So, and I know that there are pockets throughout the county, throughout the county, but throughout the country, that have found ways of being creative, of attracting some of those more seasoned teachers to some of those schools in which we're looking to increase the number of years of our educators at those schools. So I'm not quite sure what benchmarking can be done to figure out, like, what are those pockets of innovation, and what can we bring here? But just noting that there are some people who are figuring it out, if we can learn from them and perhaps adopt it, that'd be great.
We are. And, and the committee that Dr. Navarro was speaking about, you know, we have been looking at research around the nation, and remember, the blueprint was looking at the best schools in, in the world. And so, you know, I think there's a diverse group of people with a diverse experiences, and we are looking at, at different schools and what schools have done to not only bring teachers, but to retain them as well. And looking at what the research is, is saying about teacher retention. And again, having that teacher voice is really going to be, it, it's important because they're the ones with, with the boots on the ground.
To some of my colleagues' points, it's not just if we pay them, they will come or they will stay. But perhaps it is additional days off for those teachers in some of our Title I schools, or it's perhaps more autonomy over the types of professional development that they have an opportunity to take at those particular schools. But it's being creative in that we're trying to incentivize them in coming and staying in these particular schools by offering them, love the housing idea if our commissioners would support it, and giving them something that they're able to, again, staples to keep them in those communities, in those schools, educating our children.
Ms. Thomas.
Thank you for that, and I wanted to ask, you said you had to change the way you allocate the money. Okay, and it goes, each school had to do their own allocation type to show the budget's spinning the correct way?
We will set the budgets for them, we will allocate it. They have to process any expenditures they have against the budget, but it's also in central office. For instance, if we order textbooks for third graders, we need to allocate that expense to all the schools based on the enrollment for third graders, which is a different way than what we've done before.
And this has to be done by, you said July the first, 2024?
That's when the budget has to be set that way, and that's when we will need to start reporting.
Okay. So you say you need to start by then, or you haven't started already?
So we have started already. For example, with ordering, if we have, like Dreambox is a software subscription that all elementary schools use. Typically, that bill comes in and it's paid on a central office account code. We can't do that anymore. That bill has to now be split twenty-two ways because each elementary school takes advantage of that software system. So any and everything that comes in, if we can determine exactly where it's going to be, then we allocate it that way. So we're doing that on this side. But then on the back end, we have to then say, okay, Dreambox is split twenty-two ways. So when we're building the budget, the budget needs to be split at that level twenty-two times for however much the subscription costs. So we've got a pretty good handle on tracking the expenses at the school level. We've just got to now come behind it and match the budget to the expenses at that level.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas.
Is there a way to go back and talk to the blueprint, the thoughts that they had around the burden, you know, at the federal government level? They'll give you policy, you implement it, and then you get to go back and say, this is the burden on us for doing this. And oftentimes, that, you know, being able to just talk about the burden helps to be able to clarify some points, like splitting software between twenty-two schools is a little bit absurd, right? Because you're only, I mean, if you did that, it would cost you more money to have the license to split than to buy them because you get economies of scale.
So when we say split it twenty-two ways, we're saying the bill comes in for a hundred thousand. We just divide it and we have twenty-two account lines.
But I guess my point is to build twenty-two account lines just to report when it's just not practical. So I just wondered if there was an opportunity after this, you know, first go around, for you all to go back and say, here's a couple of points of clarity. In theory, it sounded great, but in practicality, here's a couple of refinances that, you know, we would like to have because some of these things aren't just practical. So I don't know. I guess I would like to see us collect that, you know, post after doing this and say, here are a couple of points that even back up to the legislator we could talk about, like here's some things that need to be refined a bit.
Are you referring to Ms. Thomas, the burden on staff?
Yes, the burden on staff to do all this work, just for, you know, something that is not practical for some things. For some things, I very much think it's practical and we should do it. But for other things, I just don't. Right. I mean, even just the configuration of the system in order for you to do that, configuration in a system is not easy. And it takes a lot of work. And then you have to do it on an annual basis. And every time they make changes, you have to go back for configuration. It's an IT expense for us. I mean, there's a lot of variables that we need to consider. I think the founders of the blueprint would benefit from seeing that burden from an infrastructure perspective so that we can say, we'd love to give you this data, but it's not practical for us to have this burden on the staff, IT footprint and all of those things on an annual basis to give you minute numbers in some places.
So I think Ms. Thomas should have joined the CFO calls, Karen, because it's so interesting how she's wired because she goes into the right details of the work. I would say, so we have conversations continuously with the AIB board that it was put in place to ensure that the blueprint law was implemented to its full. The chief financial officers from all the twenty-four school systems come together and it's been huge work. And you just outlined what people don't see in terms of making these shifts, the amount of time that all of these folks have had to change huge infrastructures to be able to do that. And at a cost where even at the state level, it hasn't fully been, I would say, thought through all the way. But I would tell you that the AIB board would say that this is a necessary shift, and it's a difficult shift, but a necessary shift, to make sure that the accounting of the funding actually follows the student. Because there was no, unless you were Baltimore City that did fair student funding years ago with ERS and everything else, there's very few educational institutions or school systems that have that sort of, that can account to that level of detail. So, you know, I would channel AIB to say, we have to guarantee that we're talking about equity in the way that the blueprint funding is meant to do that. And the only way we can do that is if we can follow the money correctly and see whether it does get there or doesn't get there. But it is, as you mentioned, and I think these folks would tell you, it has been a Herculean task, task to change the infrastructure of these systems, to be able to do this and to implement it. I will tell you, while we have to have this in place, the next level of conversation that we plan to have with the board around what does this mean in our schools? Because there's a funding implication, there's a budget spreadsheet implication of whether, did you do it, did you not? This is how much School A gets? Are you funding it to that amount? It's the what are we going to do that I think we're also on the hook, frankly, to start showing that we are making some of these major changes and reform efforts in the school system. And that's sort of part two of this presentation that we'll be bringing to you once the team that we have assembled sort of puts their head together and comes up with the best recommendations on what we do moving forward.
And thank you, Dr. Navarro. And I'm not suggesting that we not do this funding. Like, I understand the fundamental reason why. But I think it's important for people to understand the consultation hours that it takes for an IT person to come in and do the configuration. It's at the tune of about a hundred fifty dollars an hour. And that's configuration that you may have an expense every year. So someone has to take that expense. Is it our district that takes that burden? Or is that something that we look to the state to say, you know, maybe they benchmark and say, here's the configuration for you. And they give the configuration to everybody. You don't have to pay for it. You put that configuration in your system and then everybody has something. So I mean, there's some things that they could do to help everybody, but I don't think they'll think of those things if we don't express the concern around those types of details when it comes to being able to comply with what they're asking.
AIB has been very responsive to many of our requests. When we had to submit our blueprint implementation plan last year, we were giving them back data that we had already submitted to them for years. And it's frustrating to have to go to this person for this data and I'm going to this person for, you know. And so we've been, I mean, we cried, complained, and, you know, yelled, frankly. And this year, knock on wood, they say, that this data that we would have to create for the upcoming report is going to be included in our template already. So they are responsive to some of our concerns and our comments and such. But as Dr. Navarro said, it is this change of thinking. And they are very much focused on this equity lens and ensuring that the money does follow the student. So certainly, we do keep a list and we do debrief with AIB. They sit on our calls with PIZAM once a month, which is very nice. So we do, we are very vocal and I'm sure the CFO meetings are equally as.
Right. AIB is on our CFO calls. So they hear the complaints, concerns, all of that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So on the agenda is the Board Handbook. And I'm not anticipating a lot of discussion right now, but it's there for everybody to see. Apologies, it got posted a little later. It got posted today, vice last week. But we talked about a bunch of things at our retreat, and I think all those are captured here. So if they're not, please let me know. And Ms. Smith, I don't know if you, I'm guessing, no, okay. So Ms. Smith may have some things to add.
In full disclosure, that's not to say that your chairman did not give me ample time to include my edits. However, they are now being included on the SharePoint site. So they are not on what we have in Board Docs.
And that, yeah. And if you could, I ask that you send it to me rather than make the change in the SharePoint site. Because if nine people make a change, it's going to be impossible to have any kind of configuration control. So if there's a topic that's not included there that we discussed at the retreat, please let me know and we'll put it in there and we can have it ready for the next time we get together. And it's a living document, you know, and we can change it. Ms. Butler-Washington.
It was up under the, at board meetings, the last bullet, personal devices should not be used on board member except family safety concerns or emergency. We stated that I am on call at all times. So therefore, that would not work for me.
So.
Page eleven.
Yeah.
Ms. Butler-Washington.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, so this says, and I remember the conversation, sure, you can have your cell phone, except for family concerns or emergencies. And if those are related to work, sure, that's fine. It doesn't say that.
I just rather say it in their work.
Sure, sure.
And then, page eleven.
Yep, got it.
And then up on the board member district, we have discussion on whether board members will receive assistance from CCTS staff to include the superintendent to conduct district meeting. The next sentence says the superintendent may attend district meetings at his or her scheduled permit, as permit. So if we strike after staff, she still has the right to say yes or no. So it doesn't need to say to include superintendent to conduct district meetings. When at the next sentence, she says the superintendent may attend district.
So there's two different things there. So one is the preparation, if you will, for the event. So if a board member would like to have something in their district, that's fine. But it's on, the board member should not, if I'm wrong, Karen, the board member should not be able to task the superintendent or staff with providing assistance in having that meeting.
Oh, right.
So stop, next sentence. All that notwithstanding, the superintendent can still come to that meeting as long as it meets the superintendent's schedule.
Okay.
Yeah. Is that, answer your question? Okay. All right. And if there's anything else, you know, just, we can revisit it. And you can read it again. I tried to catch all of the typos and things that were in there. And we can talk about it at the next meeting.
So this one here is that we're looking at that was included. That's the latest one. But should we hold review until we get these additional edits? Is that what you're saying?
So if you don't have it, she may not have it. So there's a SharePoint site where if you make changes, they're updated real time. I'm asking you not to do that.
Okay.
Take this. And if you have, if there's a topic that's not there, let me know. Or make edits to that and send it back to me. And that, because otherwise, we'll have nine people making changes and.
Certainly. Thank you.
Yeah, be on topic with each other.
Shelley disabled the editing.
Oh. Good job. Okay, okay.
I think Ms. Smith and Mr. Lucas.
All right. Fair enough. All right. Good with that. So the next thing on the agenda, which we discussed last meeting, is a resolution for National Special Education Day. So.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Made by Mr. Hancock, seconded by Ms. Morley. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you very much. That's unanimous to include the student. All right. And last.
Mr. Lucas, if I may. I know that we wanted to present the National Special Education Day. It's on December second this year. And I was wondering if you and the board would give me a special permission to be able to formally present the resolution maybe later this week and see if Ms. Smith can join me and we can get some, because if we do it at the December meeting, it will have already passed. And we were trying to see if we could maybe do a picture opportunity and formally present it like we did for the previous resolution.
That's okay with the board?
Yes.
When I just, I'm not sure if this is an amendment or just a request. In presenting that, is it possible to have educators, staff, like?
Yeah. So we could work together to invite some folks and try to get, because Shelley's going to want a big picture. And so we'd like to get some parents and, yeah.
Just let the board know when and where that happens.
Yep.
Dr. Navarro, include a representative from CCAC. And specifically maybe reach out to Ms. Sapp because I know that, you know, she worked directly with us in drafting this. So we'd like, if possible, or to have someone at least from CCAC, right, to represent.
So I will have Mr. Lowndes and his staff work on it because we will have, we were trying to work around their schedule and then work with, to have board members, as many board members potentially come that they want to do. So we'll work on it tomorrow and let everybody know before the weekend. Sorry for the short notice.
All good, all good. Motion to adjourn made by Ms. Thomas and seconded by Mr. Hancock. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Have a good night. One more thing, if I could. This Saturday, this Saturday, North Point High School football team is playing for the state championship. It's at three thirty, I believe, in Annapolis. So it's supposed to be good weather.